All right.
All right, we're going to call the Monday, March 8th Order of Ed meeting to order at 6:30. And we're going to start with the pledge, following the pledge. We'll have a moment of silence for a police officer Nick Winham, who was killed in San Antonio on February 26th in St. Louis, Virginia. Nick was a 1990 graduate of Valley Central. His father, Larry, and his brother Jared were both Valley Central teachers. His mother, Jean, was a tutor for the district. So our thoughts and prayers are with the win of them. So as a result of COVID, we're hoping this meeting will be in person. So following safety guidelines for social distancing and round maps for the health and safety of the core members and our administration. There's no in-person public participation this evening. And the meeting will be streamed live on the district meeting page. All right, so we're going to start off with the college lines.
None tonight.
And what commendations?
We have some of those, thank you. Elise Montanora, a junior bass trombonist at Valley Central High School, has been accepted into the prestigious Yola National Institute, which is the Yola is the youth orchestra of the LA Philharmonic Symphony 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 Symphony, excuse me, orchestra in California. The Yola National Institute, YNI, is an in-depth training program for young musicians, musicians interested in pursuing a career in the field of music and is invested in youth and community development through music education. It's a two-year fellowship program composed of about 20 young musicians and mentors from across the United States. They connect to each other, explore how music can be used to promote the arts for self-discovery in their communities and how they can get back to their communities through music. So that's obviously a tremendous accomplishment and achievement for Elise. Congratulations to her. This year, all eight of our seniors in the science research program was accepted to complete at the Eastern Mutual Upstate Junior Science and Humanities Symposium. The event was held on Saturday, February 6th, and our students presented their three years of research. They assumed through panel of judges. Man Reminer was one first place in his room promoting him to compete in the upstate junior high school competition in March as a speaker. Kelly Coonan won second place in her room, offering her the opportunity to present her work as a poster at the upstate event. Ella Jane Mahan took third place in her room. Congratulations to our Valley Central Science Research seniors. Honorable mention, Valley Central High School Winter Fest, which was held on March 4th, 2021. And the Valley Central Elementary Schools Read Across America Week was held from March 1st to March 5th. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the proposed consent agenda. Do I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Discussion. On favor. opposed. Attention. Next on the agenda is your force.
I'll start off with the under the heading of opening schools. Opening schools, there's many complicated rules. I've had today, I got the chance to go to our behind line Zoom with the Winter Institute Lobby Day. And that was a quote from Shelley Metmeyer, who is the Senator from New York, who is the head of the Education Committee. And one of the things, I'll talk more about it, but one of the things that she was frustrated with is the fact that rules are passed from the governor down and we're not getting much notice in the rules. And we faced one of the things I can remember is on Friday night finding out that we had to set up a ballot to everybody Friday night at seven o'clock. That's just one of many, but her frustration is that the legislature has not had much input in the rules and discussions on that. And she's hoping that's going to change. I'll start there, but some of the things I found out today from Shelley, her Senator, layer was she is a great advocate, we talk about this every year, about full funding of foundation aid. Her recommendation is that we get it up to 70% to start and then try to recover the rest. The governor doesn't, doesn't agree. He feels that we don't owe that money. And she said, that's where the dispute lies. She was very happy to hear that we were going to get the stimulus money that New York should do very well. She said the next fight with that, though, is the governor, we got the money, we were cut 10% or we were, we got money last, last spring. And that money, we were told was going to help, but then we were told we had to cut 10%. Then we got money right before Christmas because we were told we have to cut another 10 or 20%. That filled in for that money that we did have to cut. The money we anticipate get now, she said, the fight's going to be that the governor makes sure it goes to the right place, to the schools where it belongs. So she feels that the governor is in a position right now where the pushback might not be as much as it had been in the past. She was mentioning today. A couple of the things she talked about, she was actually, she's a great advocate for having full day pre-K for four-year-olds. Of course, the state would have to fund that. That's something I think would be a great thing for kids before they come to kindergarten. She also, we've talked about this many times here, she feels that the tax, homeowners are taxed to their max and that we can't continue raising school taxes on the homeowner every year, that we need additional revenue sources. And that we have to come up with some way to fill that up. That's her, her main goal, she said. And she has some ideas on how to do that. One of the things she mentioned, and I don't think I tell it one trade secrets there, is putting a tax on people who make $5 million or a year, and that money would go directly to education, she said. So she's in there, she's a good lady, she's fighting hard for education, she's down in Yonkers. That's where she grew up and, you know, Yonkers is a tough place and you have a lot of diversity down there. Right across from Yonkers, you know, you have some of the richest people in New York State and Yonkers, you have some of the forests. So I feel good that she's advocating for us up there and she, she definitely knows the issues and knows what's going on. One of the things, you know, she's frustrated by the fact that we don't get input at the level we'd like, certainly, or at least have the discussions, have us at the table. And someone was asking, you know, me, what has the district done to advocate for the district? And I said, well, we've done, we're, I'm in meetings a lot, and I'll give you the background on that in a minute. We have chief meetings every month, they call them, at BOSIS. So in the last 11 months, I've been to 11 chief meetings. But outside those, we have meetings two, three times a week for COVID-related things. And we have this county exec on there, Dr. Gilmour on there, we've had Regent Will Sock, Will Sock, I didn't get his on there. So I said to Ellen, I said, could you just call BOSIS and see if they have a number of meetings we've had? She called and BOSIS doesn't keep a run record. So Ellen went back, checked my calendar, and I thought it was, it was good to find out that we've been meeting, we met 98 times in 11 months. So 11 to 99 is nine times a month. So that's the level of meetings and talking. We've written, I think, Marion C. Moser letter, so has Bill and Brad. I think we've written at least five or six letters to the county exec, to Dr. Gilmour, to the state. And we have been trying to advocate. And it's very frustrating because we don't have the input that we want. They listen to us, they're very polite, we're invited here to come Wednesday night, but they follow the directive of the state in some cases and from the National CDC, and this is kind of where we are. But you're going to hear some better news tonight about trying to get more kids back in school as we go forward. So that's all I have. Okay, thank you.
All right, next is the Assistant Superintendent's report.
So we're going to talk through the COVID update last, but I just briefly wanted to talk to a little bit about the state testing. So I'm not sure if everybody's aware, but the United States Department of Education is not going to accept a blanket waiver from the states to deal away with virus testing this year. So right now, it looks as though we are going to have to administer four of the regions that are required by the United States Department of Education, which is Algebra I, Living Environment, Earth Science, and English Language Arts. So in order to prepare kids, we're working with the principals and the department heads, we just have preliminary discussions, but how we could offer an after-school support for those kids because obviously we haven't been able to prepare them up to the way that we would in pre-COVID times. So if we are going to have to administer those tests, we feel that it's very important to support the students as much as possible. So we're working on putting together a plan for that. We are working on summer school, the, thank you, the curriculum positions have been approved. And we're going to start working with those people to work on writing that curriculum for summer school. We're hoping to have about 325 elementary students. We're going to add a piece to the middle school, summer school to deal with social and emotional issues. So they are writing curriculum for a social emotional learning piece that we would add to the middle school to help the population with transitioning back after COVID. And recently I went to, I offered it to all the administrators and a couple of them took me up on it. And we recently attended the first day of a workshop on giving and receiving feedback. And it talked a lot about making connections, the fourth corrections, and it was very valuable. So, but so I have under my Assistant Superintendent report and we'll do a COVID update, I think.
Just said Senator Mary, but I also mentioned she was working hard to earn more money for summer school. She said she realizes that schools are going to try to do that, she's trying to get us support. So again, it's all about wrangling the money, make sure it goes to the right place.
I'll just give a quick update with athletics, just because we get so many questions and emails about athletics. Our winter sports season, our abbreviated winter sports season has concluded. It went from February 1st to February 28th. At the onset, we had 45 total contests scheduled. We played 43 of those contests, 19 home, 24 away. Two were canceled due to COVID-related issues. We, we had one COVID positive case, no athletes that were exposed, tested positive or showed signs and symptoms. We were fortunate enough to have all of our winter sports teams have all of their senior night events, which was nice to see. Those were streamed live for the diversity. We had, at times, we had as many as 500 live viewers on the YouTube channels, on district YouTube channels. Our fall two sports season began on Monday, the 1st, March 1st, will run until April 18th. That includes football and cheerleading, girls and boys soccer, cross-country, girls swimming and diving, girls tennis and volleyball. And our participation numbers so far are good. Our athletic staff is doing an outstanding job of making sure that our athletes are following all mandated guidelines. Section 9 athletics is updated, there are spectator policy, and there, there will be spectators allowed at outdoor events. There'll be two spectators per athlete. Each school is having passes printed up to have at the event so that the spectators will be able to be identified. Some schools are allowing visiting team spectators. We're one of those schools allowing it. All spectators will be expected to abide by all school rules, new mandated guidelines, and all social distancing guidelines. There are no spectators permitted at any indoor events. So our JV University volleyball matches will be streamed live as they have at other indoor events during the winter season. I'd like to thank Chris Moore and his tech support team for the support during the games, the game streaming of the live events. The links for the live streams will be posted on the athletic website. They'll be posted the day before or the day of, just because there's, there's changes. So if you plan on catching one of the games, one of the matches, the links will be posted, just make sure that you're checking that today. Spectator guidelines are also posted on the athletic website as well as the Facebook page. And also on the Facebook or on the athletic website is a list of the visiting schools allowing for spectators. And again, that, that changes as well. Some, some schools have said that they're going to try it to see how it goes. If they have an issue with it, they're going to put an end to visiting spectators. So I would recommend anybody planning to go to an away game, make sure that you're checking their website that day. And you could also check their school website as well. Like to comment just quick about the district event photographers. We knew that this would be important with so many, the events not being live. Patty's been, done an outstanding job along with her staff of, of event staff photographers. They've been covering all the athletic events, the senior nights. They covered the senior winter festival, which was held, I believe, last Wednesday night at the high school. Several parents and community members have reached out to email us to tell us how they appreciate the photos on Facebook. And the links for the Facebook albums are posted on the athletic website for all the contests. With regards to human resources, the Orange County Department of Health has provided guidance for the post-vaccination quarantine. We know recently they've updated their mandates and their guidelines for people that have been fully vaccinated. It states that if a person receives both doses of the, of an FDA-approved authorized COVID vaccine and is exposed to an individual who has tested positive for as long, as long as the person vaccinated remains asymptomatic and 14 days have passed since the date of their final dose, they will not have to quarantine when that exposure is more than 90 days from the receipt of the final dose. The reason we mention that is that that's important for us here in school district because as we have more and more faculty and staff that are getting vaccinated, we'll be less and less likely to have to quarantine those folks if they are exposed. Our, our staff has been notified of the current vaccination updates. And Governor Cuomo last week, last Wednesday, announced that domestic travelers do not have to quarantine or provide proof of a negative test if they've been fully vaccinated and meet all the criteria. That's the governor's announcement on Wednesday. But to date, Orange County Department of Health has not updated their travel quarantine guidelines to correspond with the governor's announcement. But we're expecting that that will be done shortly for those who are traveling and potentially exposed. Last week, BOSIS requested a list for, of school staff from all the schools in Orange County who had anyone interested in receiving a COVID vaccine. We've submitted that list to BOSIS. We had, I think we had 303 total names on the list that we submitted. And we're hopeful that Orange County is working to set up additional vaccination pods and that our staff will be included.
Well, statement and a question. Before it came in tonight, CDC announced that people who get vaccinated as a group can gather without masks. So that's going to be a future guideline. Well, it's out there now in the news, but it's coming down our way. Second, with what transpired, Marion's emailed today, what are you doing with sports this week? Are sports canceled or are they quarantined or are they?
No, I mean, anybody that's been contact traced because of exposure would, would have to quarantine. And that's affected a couple of our coaches. So, you know, we, our athletic director's working to get those teams covered with other coaches, which is nice that we have a couple of coaches at each level or, you know, coaches can combine JV and varsity practice or JV coach can cover modified practice. So I think we've got it covered. We did have one varsity volleyball player who tested positive. So right at the conclusion of the volleyball tryouts, our volleyball team is, is under quarantine right now as well as the coaches. And I think that's, I believe it's set to end the latter part of this week, Thursday or Friday. So those teams should be back practicing.
Like I know, I got the email that the high school students are home tomorrow. So is there still sports practice even though the kids are home from school?
Yeah, but part of the problem that it was, it was a staffing issue at the high school. So, I mean, that's been part of the problem when we have somebody that's exposed and we were putting, you know, 10, 15 teachers out because of the exposure. It's tough to cover all those classes. You know, the kids that are out can, can come back, if they're not contact traced and they're not quarantined and their coaches aren't, then they can, they can come back to practice. Is this an exception?
Can I just make a comment about ARCT, just for clarification, you're 100% right. ARCT, people that have been vaccinated who wear, don't like to wear masks around other vaccinated, vaccinated people, but in, with schools, they would still have, even if I'm a vaccinated teacher, I still need to wear a mask.
Sure. Since you're in a group that is going to be vaccinated.
Right, so it's only, everybody's vaccinated or you're with your band.
I'm just sure the, the emails that we've been getting will probably start emphasizing on that. Everybody's getting vaccinated, why aren't we going back soon?
Thank you.
I just want to say, I thought winter sports was great. And I think you said 43 out of 45, which is good. So, you know, thank you to you and Rich and the coaches and the technology and facilities. And I know I had the opportunity to sneak by a modified basketball gym and I was stopped and asked while I was there too. And I gotta say, I didn't catch your name, but the chaperone working, when she was on those kids with the masks and she was really doing a great job and making sure everybody was spread out. So I think, I mean, 43 out of 45 is pretty good, so.
Pleasantly surprised, for sure.
Thank you, everybody. All right, next, go ahead.
Thank you, it's a first student as well, because I was on the emails where it was rescheduling buses and I know we're not going out today, we were going to move into Monday. They were pretty flexible as well, so.
They've been great. They, they really have been great. I talked to Rich and Marlene about those two, they're really accommodating. Yeah, it's nice.
So just give you an update on a few things. So first today was talk, so we're struggling to keep up with staffing on the facilities and the cafeteria side of things. We have one building right now where the entire cafeteria staff is in quarantine along with all custodians, but one. So we're pulling from all over. We sent some central office staff over to the buildings today to help out. I was over there helping pack meals to go out to classrooms for a while. And Ellen Armel, she's jumped right in, her and her assistant have a setup shop in the kitchen. So we're doing what we can to keep up. We had some custodians that were shifted from other schools. So just wanted to let you know, we, we got a lot of good people that are working hard and we're trying to keep these buildings open. Follow up on the, the presentation from Jason Schwartz from a few meetings ago. You might remember Mal asked a question if we do have any upcoming, any bonds that we're able to refinance coming, coming up. And we actually do have one that's callable in February and we can refinance that 90 days earlier than that. So we're looking at the November timeframe. So there's just some resolutions that the board has to pass in the, in the meantime. So we're going to try to get that to you next meeting. Jason's available to answer any questions for you. It's early, but we just want to get it over out of the way before we get into summer. But the projected savings on that over seven years is roughly $200,000 total. So it'll be good for us to try to take advantage of that come November. Our state aid withholdings, good news here, they have been paid. The only thing left out there is about $17,000 left from last year's half-day UPK grant. But they, I talked to Jackie today, the state has acknowledged it and it will be paid. Our full day was paid in full, our BOSIS day was paid in full, and our excess cost aids that were withheld were paid in full as well. So good news on that front. And I wanted to bring your attention to the article that was in the Ms. Bus School Boards Magazine. We have a chance to read it, but it kind of piggybacks on Senator Shelley Mayer. She's, she's quoted in here. So I just got three bullets that I want to share with you. So Senator Shelley Mayer, who's the Chair of the Senate Education Committee, said that Cuomo's education spending plan and his proposed budget will push school districts to the brink of a fiscal cliff because it relies heavily on federal relief funds while scaling back state-sourced funding. And the ASBO calls that I've been on at the state level, they've been kind of sounding that same alarm. This is kind of similar to what happened prior to the gap elimination back in the 2010s where it was initially the, the funding level was, there was federal money thrown at it. And when that federal money dried up, that's when, that's when the cuts were coming. She says, we will face a very disastrous cliff if these proposals, which is both the use of the federal funds and the consolidation of expense-based aids in the state budget are consolidated, go forward. That, in my opinion, is probably not likely to happen only because of the way that things are out of state. And this is stuff that he's tried to pull in years past. So I don't think that will go forward. But what he does, and what the state does as far as holding that federal money hostage rather than giving it to the districts, does us no favor. However, Cuomo's Deputy Secretary for Education, Daniel Fuller, said that the concern about the following year is something that we will have to address and look at, but I think we will, we will have to look at the entirety of our immediate needs. And I also, knock backwood, think we will find ourselves in a much different position next year at this time. So we'll see what, what comes on that. Also want to share with you guys, we've had a, a number of employees that have been victims of the unemployment scam that's going on nationwide. It seems now, Bill, I don't know how many employees each week. It, it depends.
Yeah, it is many as dozen each week.
Yeah, so this originally kind of came up when COVID first hit in the spring where we started hearing that the teachers were, were having unemployment claims filed in their name that did not file. And when we first heard about it, we kind of thought it was a district-level breach, but then it was very apparent that it wasn't Valley Central. It wasn't just Orange County, it's not even statewide. So it's out there, it's, Bill sent out an informative memo to our staff over the weekend of things that they should look at and what to do if they are a victim, but we just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that. And we are pulling the budget together, getting ready to present you guys a full budget at our next meeting. So tonight, we're going to go over kind of a high-level view of a certain, a couple areas. I encourage you, if you have any questions, you want to reach out and talk to us during the week, we're free to do that. But on the superintendent's budget will be presented to you guys on March 22nd, KCU especially, since your first year. If you have any questions, give us a call. That's all I have.
Next is Oxford.
I went there for Regents, Regents Willis.
Yeah, Regent Willis, Willis, I have notes on that if you.
I was just going to cover, anyway, we always go on COVID tangent towards the last hour and a half or so of the meeting. There was some spirited conversation from their board to everybody in the county. Some of it was inappropriate, some of it was okay. The feeling that I got from some of the board members, they're not in favor of coming back 100%. They're gonna, they're okay with following Dr. Geller's guidance on it. But there's a strong contingent of most of the small schools, they still don't explain thoroughly enough to the public that they're very adamant about going back 100%. that they're very adamant about going back a hundred percent. So it was, like I said, it was a spirited conversation.
Just for clarification, the Oxba board members are in favor of going back or the district board members?
The district board members. The ones that were talking about those are more of the schools that are in our situation, larger schools, smaller buildings. It's the smallest schools that have hardly any room and that want, that are really fighting hard to come back a hundred percent.
I, Regent Wills, Francis Wills spoke at the beginning. She had a good presentation. She echoed a lot of what Brad and John said about the budget, not enough money for schools. It's like a federal Band-Aid in funding. And when that runs out, we're going to be in trouble. She spoke about the need to really support your staff and your teachers during this time and how exhausting it is from what she's seen and witnessed to teach in this way. She spoke about the frustrations of running schools during COVID with so many different groups having a say in what is happening between the governor, the legislature, the commissioner of education, the chancellor, the board of regions, the department of health at the state and local levels and the county governments, just making sure everybody is on the same page because and just a need for greater flexibility in making the rules that we have to follow. That I felt like the common theme from the entire Oxba meeting was, they said the two Cs, consistency and clarity. And that there's really a disconnect between all of these organizations and the districts in far, in so far as what they think they're able to do or what they're doing. And that's what they said, consistency and clarity is needed for everybody so that everybody's following the same rules. They did give an update on testing again. And they said they're probably going to make me go through the three through eight testing and four regions exams. And she also spoke about the six foot rule and how until that's changed, really, it's impossible for these schools to bring any large number of kids back. Some of the other highlights that I wrote, Pastor John spoke about attending the first Diversity, Education, and Inclusion Committee meeting. He said it was a great intro. The next meeting is the twentieth, and he will have more to report then. He spoke about that the governor was waiting to sign the legislation about decreasing the number of votes needed for petitions to run for the board, which went through today. Ten people are signed up for the prospective board members workshop. There was big talk that there was rumor that new guidance would come from the state last week that was gonna really impact bringing kids back. That never happened.
And we were told last week, Friday before, we were told by Wednesday, on Wednesday, we're told Friday or today.
And really, Bill Heck spoke for a while about Oxba and about all of the superintendents meeting constantly and and really their advocacy efforts for consistency and clarity in everything that's going on in schools. And just that they continue to meet constantly to try to work on these things. The BOC's report, the budget presentation will be in April via Zoom. And that they started a COVID COVID vaccine database to try to get staff members vaccinated. And they did speak a while about the legislative appointments. Oxba set up legislative appointments with all the school board members with their representatives to specific to their district. I will say that Valley Central had the largest turnout of any of the other schools with the meeting we had with Senator Scoofus, which went about over an hour regarding our school budgets and and COVID. And he seemed to understand what our issues were. And that's it. Anybody have any questions about Oxba?
I think part of the issue today is, just thinking about that, we speak to Senator Scoofus and he hears us and he wants to help us, but they don't include the legislature with any of this stuff. And as Sarah said, there's all these different agencies. Everybody's kind of in their own silo and no one's on, you know, communicating one voice. So that's why I it's frustrating. And you guys see some of the letters from parents. And I absolutely understand why it's frustrating from parents. But I I hope you understand and I hope we can make a case Wednesday night that we have tried our darnest to be involved and at the table with the discussion, sending letters and things. It's not, I don't believe you want to try it. So appreciate Sarah for mentioning it.
Okay, thank you. All right, Sarah. All right, next on the agenda is the COVID nineteen updates.
I'll be quiet.
So, thank you. So before I even start, though, I did want to take a minute to thank the community because despite the frustrations that we have all been experiencing, the difficulties that we've had, I really can't tell you how many kind emails I've received from parents expressing their gratitude and their appreciation, especially over this past weekend, which prompted me to, you know, be reminded to thank the community. Although there's so many questions, they do reach out with their telephone calls to let us know that they do believe that we're striving to do what's best for kids and that they understand how difficult it is. I also wanted to take a minute to thank the students for what they're doing because I don't think that we do that enough. This is like an unprecedented time. And from our youngest kindergarten learners to our graduating seniors, you know, they're really working hard. And and I think that we all need to kind of take a step back and and remember that, that this is really the aside from all the arguing and disagreeing, that we really have to focus on them and and thank them for what they're doing and do everything we can to support them academically and emotionally. I also wanted to thank the teachers and the staff and the administrators. The reopening task force met recently. And I have to tell you, in June, in July and August, when we were meeting, and it was very hectic and it was very passionate and we were all, you know, very intense, this meeting was like night and day. It shows how we've become so flexible and willing to like roll with the punches and that when you tell them, hey, we may have to make a change or your building's closing on this, they're they're very willing to say, okay, this is how I can make it work. So they really deserve to be commended. And I did actually want to take, I'm gonna take a central office staff. Although I'm the COVID nineteen coordinator and I put out like probably way too many correspondence, like every single thing that we do is done in collaboration. I mean, I'm constantly, you know, working with John, he's like the the best support I could ever ask for and Bill and Brad. I mean, this is a tremendous team. You know, I feel like my my son knows them on, you know, a first day basis and is like, oh, your phone's staying in a spread. You better pick it up, you know. So they really, I couldn't ask for a better team to work with. So I just wanted to take a minute because COVID nineteen is really taking a toll on everyone. And I think that we're doing a good job. And I want to thank the board too for all their support throughout all of this because without your support, you know, we're really dead in the water. So with that, I just wanted to kind of start with where what we've done thus far, where we're going, and and then further down the line. So what we've done thus far is we opened on time for all K five students. Self-contained ALC Viking Academy students have been in person five days a week since September minus the holiday clauses and any quarantine periods. Our ENL students were offered instruction five days a week several months ago. At the secondary schools, a team four days a week was created for at-risk students, which is now five days a week. At-risk twelve grade students were offered the opportunity to come back five days a week to assist in ensuring they're able to graduate. As was in our original plan, Wednesday was added as an in-person instructional day on an alternating basis for Team One and Team Two. Where also, we do not have a hundred percent asynchronous day, which is a day that many districts have where the students are simply provided with assignments on the Chromebook and there is no in-person, there is no instruction. So we're one of the only districts in the county that do not have an asynchronous day. Parents were surveyed earlier in the year to determine if their one hundred percent online students wanted to return. And those elementary principals worked to ensure that every person that asked to come back was given a spot. Principals are now working to bring back as many groups of students as possible to five days a week. Recently, EC was able to bring back their kindergarten students five days a week, which is going to be starting soon. Secondary principals right now are working to fill every single spot. So for example, one of the questions was, you know, in some classes, there's only six kids in here on Team One, and then there's six kids on Team Two. Why can't we bring those back? Should we fit twelve social distancing? So we're working, we've been working on that. Beginning in March, all teachers began to stream their classes. That was something that about ninety percent of our teachers were doing. We made a decision to have that be a directive from district with the support of the administration, that every teacher had to stream their classes. That is in order so that there was more teacher to student contact. Now, is there going to need to be some changes with that depending on the grade level, you know, as we learn what's working good? Is it great for kindergarten kids to have to stream their lessons? This, this, maybe not. So then as we start to put these in place, we'll take feedback from the parents and the teachers and the children and we'll make changes as necessary. So moving forward. So the big question is, why are we now starting to look into five day a week in-person instruction for everybody? That's a great question. So I just want to read what it says from the guidance from the New York State Department of Health. And it has said this since the beginning. Responsible parties must maintain protocols and procedures for students' safety and staff to ensure appropriate social distancing to protect against the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus when on school grounds and in school facilities. Specifically, appropriate social distancing means six feet of space in all directions between individuals or use of appropriate physical barriers between individuals that do not adversely affect airflow, heating, cooling, ventilation, or otherwise prevent the health or safety risks. If used, the physical barriers must be in place in accordance with the United States Department of Labor occupational safety and health policy. So that has always been in the in the regulations. So the the Orange County Department of Health has to adhere to the minimum standard of the New York State, but they can also be more strict. So for example, whereas the New York State Department of Health had said in the beginning, six feet or masks, we, our Department of Health said, six feet and masks. This issue of the physical barriers really never came up. I mean, it was never something that was a topic of discussion. That's the honest truth. And then Reese, and I know in talking with our one our labor council that's from Long Island, it was taking place in some places like Long Island and parts of Westchester. They were using those physical barriers. Recently, the Orange County Superintendent started, this was a big topic at the table. So what we did is that Brad is always one step ahead of everybody else. We called our architect to find out who approves these physical barriers. And actually, a couple of days later, another superintendent had asked that question. We had already had the answer. It said, the only person that can approve these physical barriers is our architect. So we worked with our district architect to determine which physical barrier was the proper one and ensured that he would be willing to write a letter to state that he approved these and he was the exact right approval, approval. So we we have done that.
I just had something that I just, I just want to thank Brad. Brad, when we started talking about this, and again, I had a BOC's call come in the next day to talk about it. Brad said, let me talk to, as Marion said, Tom Rinsonthol. And Tom, Brad said, Tom is the only one. I don't know how you knew that, Brad, but no one else seemed to know it. Tom is the only one that can help us with this. So Brad called him, had it all in place. I go on my call two days later. And the first report on the call is from their, who's the guy at BOC's? No, the other, Coleman, thank you, Mr. Coleman. And everyone was calling BOC's and said, can you approve these for us? Or can state the state approve? How do we do this? And he said, you know, I I I researched that. He didn't know himself, Mark Coleman. He said, I researched it and I, we don't have the capacity to give you approval. And neither does the state state health department. You have to go to your architects. So we were, as I say, two days ahead of that in in the queue, I believe, earlier than anyone else because we had the information. Thank you, Tom. I see Tom's on there. I don't know if you can hear, but thank you, Tom, for your help with that. So.
I I could hear you. Thank you.
We appreciate it, Tom and Brad. Great work.
So then, even so, though, and that's why I've been checking, you've noticed I've been checking my phone because I've been waiting for this email from Connie because I couldn't find it. So I kept reaching out to Connie and said, I don't understand. Why is this different now? Can you please check with the Department of Health? Can you please check with the Department of Health? Can you please check with the Department of Health? So this is the email that she got back from Erin Ray, who is the epidemiologist. She's, and it was Connie had asked a question about the barriers. And from them, she said, this is on our list from other schools asking. We see in the guidance, we see in the guidance has or. It may be okay to have partitions, but they will still need to quarantine if it's focused. So like you said, clarity. This is a letter from the Department of Health. It says, yeah, it may be okay to have these partitions. So just like with the Chromebooks, if we didn't order these partitions now, we would have gotten behind the queue. And even if we did order them, just like with the Chromebooks, we'd be lucky to stay there in in five months. We made a decision to order them. And basically, we believe that regardless, that they will come in handy. I I know lots of you have been in elementary classrooms. Let's say that the CDC does go to three feet at some time and we can, we can move closer because that could happen. And and we were told that it was going to happen any day. And in that case, we're going to need those. That guided reading tables in centers is always going to be better to have more protection than less protection. So we don't feel like they'll go to waste. We feel that we'll use them. So yes, we have an order. And for these partitions, they are at the secondary level. They have a handle. They could be carried from class to class. But there still is a lot of conversations to have with Connie and with our task force to determine just how these physical barriers will be used. And to make sure and have clarity that they are absolutely okay to be used. I know that you've seen the letters that other super, there there was one from a Rockland superintendent that went out today that said, you know, they were doing this. There's some of that. So like you said, there's no consistency in the communication that we get from all these organizations. So what we did for that is we then said, okay, let it, let's get some data from the public. We put out a survey to determine how many students would be interested in coming back back five days a week and which would not like that idea and refer back to a hundred percent online. As of five o'clock this afternoon, we had two thousand three hundred and forty-six responses. We have approximately four thousand and fifty-two students. Some of those are already five days a week. So I'm really waiting for about twelve hundred responses. We have until the end of the day Thursday, so I am pretty confident that you'll get the majority of those twelve hundred, even by the end of tonight. I'm sure there'll probably be another three hundred.
Marion, I think it's worth noting, Bush back when you had the end, so people had the opportunity to be on the call on Wednesday night. She said, let them ask questions because maybe that's why they don't have answers. So they can get any answers and then hopefully fill them out by that Thursday. So.
So the first question was, if your child is currently a hundred percent online and we are able to bring students back five days a week for in-person instruction, which method would you choose? So fifty-two, fifty-three percent said, I'm just gonna stay with online. Forty-seven percent said they would switch to five days a week. So that is five hundred and fifty-seven hundred percent online students would come back and six hundred and twenty-six would just stay online. Then the next question was same, if you, if your child is currently a hybrid student and we come back five days a week, which method would you choose? Five days a week in person, we have eighty-eight percent said that they would go to the go to five days a week. And we had eleven percent said they would switch to online. So right now, we have two hundred and ten students, hybrid students who had switched to online and one thousand five hundred and sixty-two that would come back for five days a week. So there was a question out there, why can't we offer a hybrid too? So there was a question out there, why can't we offer hybrid too? So in order to o-offer three, we, we don't have the space or the teachers to offer three models. So if we were to say to a student, you can come back two days a week, they're still gonna be coming back into a building that has kids that are five days a week in them. So they would still be with that amount of kids. So there, if we can have a hybrid class and a five day a week class, we don't have the standard space to do that. And right now, we only have two hundred and ten families that are indicating out of the amount that we have so far that they, they are not happy with coming back to the, um, five day a week. So this is gonna need to be a phased-in approach, we need more information. Um, we're gonna meet again, the task force will meet again after we get the results of the data. The elementary will most likely be the first ones to phase it in, because it's much easier at the elementary level. And then going from there, the secondary would follow. We have issues to consider such as busing, um, physical education, what does that look like? The warm weather will absolutely help us, um, cafeterias, um, is this possible? So we decided to set up a Zoom meeting, and so people could ask their questions. There's a Google form, and I know it's annoying, but I wanna make sure that I've given everybody an opportunity to ask questions. So that has gone out front three times so far, where they can ask questions on the Google form. There's a Zoom link for them to join. We have invited several members of, um, the community, Senator Scoopis, Dr. Gilman, Mr. Newhouse, um, and some of the state, um, assemblymen. So far, we have Ryan Miller, who is the state assemblyman, who has offered to come to, to the meeting. So once we get all the concerns and questions from parents, we're gonna meet again. Um, the only thing I wanted to say about vaccinations, that I know Phil already talked about it, but I will tell you, like, we are, this weekend, I got a text message, um, from, from someone, from a teacher that said, I was able to get a vaccination like this. And I'm sitting at my computer saying, well, what should I do with this information? So I just shot it out to everybody. And another teacher told me, well, I got it here, I shot that out. And within like about less than twenty-four hours, I was getting emails back from teachers that said, I was able to get vaccinated, I was able to get vaccinated. And so we're sharing and we're communicating, and I think that's the best we can do. The quarantine, if we were to bring more kids back, the problem is going to be quarantine. The more people that you bring into a building, the more that there's possibility of quarantine. And the more teachers get vaccinated, the, the teachers will not, um, be infected, but our students would be. So it is something to take into consideration. So I believe that that covers pretty much everything where we are, but we'll be happy to take this question.
So just a couple of things. So the survey is to get a pulse of the community, doesn't mean, I don't want people to think, oh, I filled out the survey this morning, it's gonna happen, right? That was to get a pulse, because as we go into this reopening plan, we need to understand who really wants to come and who doesn't, so that we can make decisions accordingly.
Right, in the, in the survey, it said on or around April twelve, if we're able to, it says that it's fluid and it's dependent upon guidelines from the state. So there, there's, in COVID, there's absolutely no guarantees.
And then even, uh, and I don't want this to count in the state thing, but I think it was county. So there's, there's still changes guidelines for quarantining, meaning if I'm in the gym with you and you're on the other side, and right now, I think I have to quarantine, but other, I think other counties are doing it where like, if you're five feet away, you're good, right? I mean, there's still differences there.
Yeah, it's close contact and proximate contact.
That's what I'm talking about.
So a close contact is if I am within six feet of, um, him for a, a short amount of time. Art and I are proximate contact. And in some places, proximate contacts do not have to quarantine, but in ours, they do. Although, I'll tell you, I've been on a couple of calls where I've listened to things to do with athletics, and even in Orange County, everybody's on the same thing. Because what they do is they don't understand the answer that they get, and then they call the state, and whoever picks up the phone, the state gives them a different answer. So even though that's the rule, not everybody's doing it the same.
And so for the town hall, we invited seven or eight politicians so far, one has accepted.
Yes, and, and Dr. Gilman and Mr. Newhouse do have a quiet commitment, as does some of their students.
Any questions?
So we're moving forward on getting the shields.
Yes.
I know one of the questions that they had at the Oxbow was if they're NFPA certified, that's fire safety certified. That's what we went through.
That's why we were.
Right, but the, from just my small amount of research, it almost doubled the price of these things. It's ridiculously expensive.
Yeah, it says right here, meets New York State Fire Resistant Guidelines. So how much does it cost for that?
Uh, approximately twenty-seven dollars a piece.
So what's the total cost?
Uh, the order we placed was over a hundred thousand.
And where is that?
We were able to pull money from an area of budget, uh, home tutoring and another line that I don't remember, but those lines hadn't been spent this year because quite frankly, we're not doing home tutoring. So, um, kinda making lemonade out of lemons here, so pulling money that we didn't use in one area of the budget, trying to get these barriers and hopefully get it back five days a week.
We're hoping also that this money coming from DC will be earmarked, you know, that's the promise. That the monies are supposed to go to help schools reopen. Well, this is a reopening cost, we have a lot of reopening costs, and we're hoping to, uh, recapture those things. But as Brad will tell you, Governor, he doesn't usually give it new money. He supplants that money with things that we already have, have been moved through. So total, we'll, we'll keep our fingers crossed.
And looking forward to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, I mean, we wanna be able, we wanna be ready to reopen full force in September, so we have to, I mean, I thought it was a little expensive, I'm a little approval, but I was like, I think that, you know, we have to be ready. And if they allow us to open in September, but you need these physical barriers, are you, you know, it's gonna help to make people feel safer, then I thought that it was money well spent, um, as it is a part of the guidelines.
Well, I, I think the other thing too, right, is that there was supposed to be some big announcement last week, and some of our neighbors put out, I may do this, I may do that, right? Which is great, but, you know, I think we understand that other schools might be doing stuff differently because they're different than us, like Art mentioned, the smaller schools, you know? And, and I think we just have to recognize that we have to do what's right for us and our community and make decisions based on the changes to, to the guidelines. And, and, you know, we all wanna reopen as soon as possible, and we're continually looking at ways that we can do it. But I think all along, everything has been about the safety of the staff and the students, and I think we have to continue with that as our priority. And, you know, I mean, I think it's great to have these partitions, and, and I know we'll lose them at some point, you know? But I think we just have to understand that we are different, and we can't get sucked into what other people are doing. We have to make our own decisions with the information that we have, and, you know? Um, I certainly think a lot of communication goes out. I mean, I think we're getting people invited, we're just giving, you know.
When do I get the cups, uh, going? When do we anticipate receiving the barriers? Oh, when do we?
Um, so we were told approximately two weeks they may be here. Uh, the reality is, we've been told a lot of things are gonna be here in two weeks, two a month, and it just hasn't happened. For example, our, our Chromebook order that I think we placed on October twentieth, or May, in September, September twentieth, uh, it has still yet to hit, um, our docs here, so.
That was gonna be last week's.
Our hope is they'll be here pretty soon. Um, the reality is, in meeting with the, uh, the principals, they need some time to get this data in out of the survey, um, to find out what we're really looking at, and then to, um, modify schedules. But we hope to be ready when, when they're ready. So I think we're looking at a target of April if possible.
I mean, I think that we have to decide, are we comfortable with this guidance? I mean, the guidance in the New York State Department of Health clearly says or. The email from, and it was just an email from the Department of Health that says, yeah, I think you can use them. Would, would we like something that's more specific from the Department of Health that says, yes, absolutely, you can use these? I think that, I, I, I think the superintendents have been asking for that. Um, but all I have so far is that email that doesn't say I can't use them, but doesn't say enough to me, absolutely. Um, but the, the department, they, because the Department of Health in Orange County keeps saying, you can follow New York State guidance, follow New York State guidance. New York guidance says or. So I think that we need to, you know, have some conversations with our, our legal counsel and get some clarity on how comfortable we are with that, and then move forward.
And can you clarify what the or statement was?
Sure, it says in here, um, it says specifically, appropriate social distancing means six feet of space in all directions between individuals or use of appropriate physical barriers between individuals. That has always been in there. And so now it has seemed to become this focal point, so that is what it says.
Well, and even again, or these barriers, so does that mean I can be a foot apart with that barrier? Or three feet apart with that barrier, or five feet, right? So.
But we would never go less than three feet.
No, I'm exaggerating, I'm just saying, that's, it's.
It's big, it's very big, you know?
And they would still wear masks?
It's a government.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, exactly, you're right.
And I think it comes down to, we need to be, it, it's our decision, it's not such a school decision, not state of New York, not Orange County, that's where we gather information from, and we are very intelligent people, we make decisions from there. We've set a conservative guideline, and I think we should stick to that conservative guideline. Whether we have barrier or not, you can put a barrier on every desk. But my biggest fear out of the forty-six hundred people we have in this district is having somebody die. So let's ride this out, you know, I think, and I said it during the meeting of, uh, uh, let me, Monday?
Well, Wednesday.
Wednesday. It's the best course of action, stay conservative. That's what the Orange County Department of Health has. There's no reason why we shouldn't, or I want to hit the homerun anyway, you know, it's almost doomed, why bother?
I think it's pretty clear that we all want the kids back at school, but we want them safely.
Sure.
But we don't think.
My biggest question is, why do we want the kids back in school? Is it truly because they're missing their education? Or are the parents missing something, and they're complaining because they're missing something? I think it's more on the other hand than anything. Like, my kids aren't missing anything.
I think it's an emotional toll on the kids as well, and that's another big issue too, is, um, your emotional health um, to the fact where, you know, some kids are really struggling, and it's not just, you know, academically, it's emotionally, and it's an extreme distress. It's just not, I'm having a bad day kind of a stress.
I mean, I've got two kids, one of them loves online and thinks it's the greatest thing in the world, and he's so happy and doing well, and the other kid hates it.
Some kids are very depressed.
He hates it, and he's having anxiety, and it's affecting him all, so that's just one family, you know? So it definitely.
And that could be just as much of a danger as the virus.
Well, I, I think the whole, I mean, I think we've done pretty well, like, do whatever, right? Um, options, right? And I know kids are struggling, so hopefully, we'll be able to continue to do whatever those options and do it in a safe way. And, and again, I think we need to do it in a way that's right for that essential, so. Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Great job there, yeah. All right, uh, next is public participation. So I didn't have, um, anything come through, uh, online from Friday, but I did have, um, a couple of things I wanted to put on record, um, from Ms. Rossi. Uh, she had, uh, two, two questions put on record. One was the district's plan for reopening five days, I, I think, uh, we just went through that. And then the other question was related to, um, the teachers union and how they felt about coming back, uh, full time. So, uh, and I can't speak to the teachers union, but I have passed that on, uh, to them. Uh, I, I did pass that question on to them, so, um, so that's it for public participation. Um, I just, speaking of public, just wanna mention, um, Sarah and I actually had a chance, we, we stopped over at the Winter Fest the other night, and, um, it was, it was actually pretty nice. Uh, they did it, I mean, a great job with setting it up, and they had a lot of, they had a lot of students come. They actually broke it up into two hours, like four hundred, or what was it, two hundred and sixty-five or something? And anyway, they had a lot, and, and the kids were having a blast. It was, it was a really good time, so I just, I just wanted to mention that it was, uh.
It was very nice to be at a school event.
Yeah, exactly.
Hopefully, the first of tomorrow.
Okay, good, all right, thank you. All right, next, uh, I'll be jumping into old business, and we have, uh, the capital project presentation. Tom, you wanna go ahead?
Sure, sure, let me, uh, share my screen. You'll have to ask, can everyone see the screen?
So just to bring everybody back quick, so this was the project that, uh, we had expected to put back out to the voters last May, and then when, when COVID hit, we decided to pull it back. This was a pared-down version of the, uh, the, the previous referendum. So we had taken out a, a lot of the, um, uh, for example, we had the, uh, the bathrooms and the concession stand behind the high school, purchase of the property for additional parking at the middle school. And, uh, this is kind of down to the bare basics that has to do with the traffic reconfiguration out in front of the high school, as well as, uh, the, um, air quality at the pool. So go ahead, Tom.
So hopefully, everyone can see the screen, I won't belabor the agenda, uh, just to kinda go through, uh, the scope as Brad has indicated. I certainly hope everyone remembers the longstanding history of the traffic issues, which is really the whole emphasis of completing this project, uh, you know, the issue to the staff, students, and parents with ingress and egress at those, uh, times of the day. Um, the DOT, as we all know, now are proceeding with the installation of their portion of the project that is improving the seventeen K corridor to match up with the turning lanes, to put in the signaling device, uh, required, uh, that was all part of this overall, uh, program of improvement. Uh, again, this was all done with intensive traffic study, uh, survey information, geotechnical evaluation. A lot of work went into getting us to this point, I think we've been working on this probably the better part of four-plus years now. Um, and of course, the, the latest break, uh, with the, with the COVID. Um, there is other select capital work as part of this process, and as you know, with respect to site-related components, we need to attach those to a building project, because that will allow you to take advantage of building aid. Absent that, the project would not receive any aid. And so, uh, what we selected to do was to select improvements that were some of the priorities that came about from both the two thousand fifteen BCS, as well as our latest visual inspections performed in two thousand twenty. So just again, to familiarize the board with the various improvements, uh, as, uh, was previously presented. Again, the site traffic safety improvements, those are being, um, of course, put forth by the DOT. Uh, that's along Route seventeen K. You can see, we would then revert the campus to a single entrance, uh, one way with, uh, a proposed signal. The DOT hasn't accepted that signal as yet, but that's still in conversation. And then, of course, the single exit way, uh, with a one-way signal, that's opposite the Dollar General, uh, as we all know, and that's going to realign the intersection to align with the Dollar General entry exit point. Uh, so this will be in a slightly different location than it is presently. And of course, uh, you know, as we come into the site, uh, we would then be splitting the traffic into, uh, parent or parking, a parking and parent loop, uh, which would allow for student drop-off, and then a dedicated, uh, bus, uh, loop, uh, for bus drop-off and pickup. So splitting those two lanes of traffic, which, uh, they aren't currently. Um, so the blue that you see is the indicator of the drop-off loop, and then, of course, you see the relocated, uh, parent and visitor parking. Uh, and then the gray areas are the dedicated, uh, bus drop-off zone. And again, this would be buses would pull in on a slant, so that they can just pull right back out. And so all the students would, uh, enter the buses from the, from the entry side of the bus, uh, very safely. Uh, the program also includes the repaving of the east parking lot, that's the area you see in green. Uh, we did not include, remember, in the very stripped-down version, we did not include repaving of the west parking lot, so the area in orange still would be left, uh, as it is currently. Um, and then we did still leave. Um, and then we did still leave open for DOT's consideration for those special, uh, after-school events. Uh, the option of having an additional exit route, right turn only, uh, from the east parking lot. So those were the components for the site-related improvements. And then as we move to the, uh, interior improvements, now we picked, we picked, uh. We picked scope on both sides of the building because we need to affect aid for both the middle school and the high school, so we picked. Improvements for some additional ADA compliance in the auditorium, that's a very nominal amount. Again, it's just to give us the incidental allowance that's attributed to the high school and then we picked, of course, the pool dehumidification. Which has been, uh, a consistent problem over the past many years with air quality in that space. Uh, looking at it from a budget estimates perspective, uh, you will see that our total has gone up. We're, uh, almost two years from where we were when it was previously, previously presented to the public and. You know, COVID has had impacts to construction, uh, the most significant impact that we saw was to asphalt paving. Uh, which has significantly increased over the past year and a half to almost two years. And so that's really the most significant increase presented with these prices. But we are looking across all of the various improvements, uh, proposed, uh, twelve point five million dollar. Um, uh, bond estimate for the program, uh, that's before some of your financing costs and, and other. Uh, things of that nature, which, uh, the financial advisor would, uh, would indicate. So looking at a pre-referendum schedule, if we looked at, uh, a resolution for the bond referendum. The latest that could be put forth is April third, but I think you would align it with your March twenty-second board meeting. Uh, the forty-five day public comment period would, would, uh, pursue, we don't have to redo seeker, we've done seeker already. All of these improvements are identical to what was previously presented and, uh, evaluated as part of the seeker process. Uh, and then we would have a public bond vote, of course, the May eighteenth, the annual budget vote date for, uh, for the public to consider. And then the post-referendum schedule, um, after the vote on May eighteenth, uh, we would, uh, in, ensue on a design process. From June until about October of this year, about a five-month, might go five and a half months of time. To present this to the education department for review and application for building permit. Uh, we would, uh, look at that as being a two-to-three-month process based upon their current queue, could be a little faster, depends on. How many submissions they're going to get, uh, between now and, uh, that, uh, October date. Uh, the public bidding process would then ensue, that's typically a two-month process to go through a bidding process and a recommendation for award. We would look to start construction, um, in summer of two thousand twenty-two, uh, with completion. Uh, most likely because of some of the phasing we have to do to, uh, present this without major impacts to the school district. We're probably looking at a spring two thousand twenty-three, uh, estimated time of completion. So are there any questions?
No, so, um, Tom, one of the options that we, that we did, uh, that project was the bathrooms for the athletic fields.
Yes.
A little bit about, are there any options available that could be considered into this project and, and what would they look like?
Well, there are, um, you could do a standalone building, um, for toileting only, so, uh, basically that is based on your bleacher capacity. I've calculated your bleacher capacity at, um, about. Fourteen hundred seats, I believe, was the estimate that I came up with. Um, and so for fourteen hundred seats, uh, yeah, you were at fourteen hundred twenty-five seats. So we divide that in half for men's and women's and that means that we have to accommodate seven hundred and thirteen for each gender. That's just the way the code, uh, stipulates it. Um, and then, uh, related to that, uh, we would need, um, about eighteen water closets in the women's. And, uh, and, and we would need ten in the men's. But typically with the state education department to not overburden districts from building such significant lavatory buildings. They'll allow you to provide fifty percent of your capacity with the use of portlets. And for most events, you probably wouldn't need them because you wouldn't necessarily fulfill your, uh, stadium to capacity. Uh, so we generally look at fifty percent of that as what you would intend to build, so that puts us at about. Uh, a toileting facility of nine water closets in the women and five, it would be three urinals, two water closets in the, in the. In the men's or the boys' room. In that, for that, you're looking at a building of approximately nine hundred square feet, uh, we recently just built one for a district down in Rockland County. Um, and that's exactly what it was, um, so I know the exact cost of the facility and looking at bringing those forward to when you would be building this. Um, at nine hundred square feet, you'd be looking at a building about, uh, anywhere from between five hundred and twenty-five and five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, to support that, now remember, as a standalone building on the site, it would not be, um, it would not, uh, be eligible for any building aid as well.
Did you say ten for men and eighteen for women?
So if you, if you were to do the full capacity based on the code. But again, uh, SED typically will allow us to build fifty percent of that capacity as long as we have the means, if needed. To provide for a level platform for portlets, if you had a very big event and you needed additional, uh, additional facilities. So we would build it at a capacity of nine in the women's room, nine lavatories. And five between urinals and la, and, and, and water closet, I'm sorry, not lavatories. Five water closets between urinals and water closets for the men, so nine and five, each of them would probably have, uh, both would have, uh, four or five. Uh, lavatories in them. Sinks, basically, and then you'd also have to have two drinking fountains per the code.
And so, so that's standalone, but what about if we added it to the side of the building?
Well, if you add it to the side of the building, again, you're still required to meet the capacity of the bleachers and remember that it's a requirement. That they be within five hundred feet of where the, uh, bleacher grandstands are. To meet the code. Or else if it, so if they're a part of the building and they were more than five hundred feet away, we would still have to put a platform, a level platform in. To provide for portlets because they have to be within that five hundred foot mark.
So Tom, attaching it to the building, um, is, is there a possibility there we would be able to get some state aid on, on something like that?
Uh, there is possibility that, uh, we could convince them to provide us some aid as part of a building improvement. Yeah.
I mean, so, the reason why I ask is I think it's embarrassing that we have bathrooms and the numbers astound me. And sort of, and we have two porta potties out there now.
And just someone pointed out, just to stay on that, uh, with COVID, no one want to go in those in the first place. But certainly COVID, no one's absolutely want to go in there and stuff, it's another consideration.
And I agree, it is expensive, like I said, we just built one of these facilities, it was a simple block building, it was a three-season building. They were not heating it all year round, it was just supplemental heat to provide, you know, conditioning for the three seasons. And we built it out of a wood, wood roof structure, but it was masonry sidewalls and it was still, um, a very similar facility. Um, it was still, you know, in this dollar range, it's still three hundred and fifty to three hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot. It, it's unbelievably expensive, I, I agree.
I have two questions, um, I just want to confirm that this twelve point five million dollars does not include the option for the additional exit?
It, um, oh, in the budget? In the budget estimate, I believe our budget estimate includes it because we wanted that to be a worst-case scenario.
Yes, okay, um, and the other question I have is, you know, you were talking about the high cost of pavement and whatnot, what's the useful life for that?
So pavements will typically last anywhere from twenty to thirty years, again, it really depends on, you know, our, our, our seasonal changes. You know, uh, winters like this winter, very, very hard on pavements, but remember, along with this, we're going to provide a lot of drainage improvements. And that's going to significantly help in the longevity of the pavement and that's something that you don't have enough of currently. And that's why your pavements have deteriorated pretty significantly, but as we all know, as you plow, as we have heavy winters. Uh, that degrades it pretty quickly as well, but twenty to thirty years is a pretty good life expectancy for pavement. Without doing some ti, sometimes it can be as, as simple as doing a retopping. Um, here, you're to the point where you really need to do full-depth replacement. Uh, one, we're changing where the, where the buses run and so we need that heavy-duty pavement to hold up in those areas. Um, and secondly, remember the full-depth pavement replacement also gives us our building aid, if we just were to re-top those areas. The education department would disallow that as part of a building aid scenario.
And how about the pool dehumidifier, what's the useful life on that?
So a good pool dehumidifier, again, should be a fifteen-to-twenty-year lifecycle, um, you know, uh, and again, part of it will, you know. Really relate to how well the system's maintained, but you know, Ryan does a fantastic job. That system just has had problems from the very beginning of its installation, I think, with, as we all know.
Thank you.
Tom, any idea when the east parking lot was last done anything to it, it's been twenty or thirty years?
Oh, it's, it's been over, over twenty years, if, if not over thirty. Yeah, and it, and it doesn't have very good drainage and so, you know, with freeze thaw cycles, as soon as you start to get that cracking. The freeze thaw, this winter is, as we, you know, just from seeing the potholes in the roads, has been significantly hard. Because we had a lar, a, a lot of large and heavy freezing and then thawing and then freezing and tha, and then thawing and the ice really built up significantly.
I had, I had hoped to get down there to take a picture because I knew this, this question may come up, the spider cracking across that parking lot, it's, it's really unbelievable. It's, uh, because we do have a, a paving bid, uh, in place that we could use to re-top it. Uh, but one of the things that, that Ryan has consistently said is that parking lot is beyond, um, just the re-topping. So we're looking at a significant cost there eventually anyway. And, uh, one of the other things, um, to mention for that parking lot is we know that it, that the lighting is very insufficient, right? We have those three pole lights on the east end that we expect to, to shine back all the way to the building. So one of the things that would get taken care of in this project is the safety lighting throughout the parking lot, even down towards the, uh, the middle school and that, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
So, uh, one of the things I'll point out too, even though the overall cost of this project did go up in a year, we kind of had it on hold. In these, uh, projections that Jason put together for us, the, uh, the impact to the taxpayer actually goes down. And the, the reason for that is we, we got, and Tom can tell you, we got a fabulous, uh, rate when we took that heat project. Out to permanent financing, um, so the impact, uh, the factor in the field is, is less. So just to give you an example, on page seventeen here of this report, um, if, if you, your home has a value of four hundred thousand. Uh, dollars and you have a star, you're looking at about sixteen dollars a year, um, to take care of this work. Down at the, uh, high school, middle school. And then it drops from there, three hundred thousand would be eleven dollars a year and two hundred thousand, uh, seven dollars a year.
That's a year, right, yeah, just a little clearer, okay.
Alright, so let me, uh, well, let's go around and see as far as questions, all right, I'm going to start with you, any questions for Tom and Brad or anybody else?
I find it kind of ironic that we're bringing up the bathrooms again for the athletic field, we shut that down last year. And I wouldn't want to see it mushroom into something, um, expensive. If we're not going to trim this down quite a bit.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I was glad you pointed out, so, so this, like, the five, ten, fourteen dollars is a year, that's the annual?
Correct, yeah, so you're looking at the senior, um, column there, it's, uh, five, ten, fourteen dollars.
Any of those, without star, it's eight, thirteen and seventeen.
Correct.
And that's with two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand or four hundred thousand and that's per year. So it's like, if you look at monthly, I see here sixty-seven cents. Or a dollar forty-two.
Correct.
No, I do think it's important that we have, if we're not going to allow people in our buildings to use the bathrooms, I think we have to have. Some type of toileting facility, um, I would prefer if it fits, if we could hook it to something to get state aid. But, um, my other question, which I know Mel has, had, was going to ask, um. The monuments and the flagpoles, would they be impacted? Cause I know like the, the Vietnam.
Right, I, I believe that those flagpoles and the monuments would have to be relocated, Tom, is that, is that correct?
Uh, we, correct, and we did go through that when we did the initial design, uh, in fact, some of the, even the, the, you had a boy scout. Uh, project, uh, Eagle Scout project and that was going to get affected and we actually met with them directly. To indicate that and indicate, you know, how we would address that, so that has been considered as part of the design process.
I would just want to make sure that they were put back, so how would that be?
So they would be relocated, but they would be put back to their existing light condition, uh, ab, absolutely the way they are.
Yeah, I do agree about the bathroom, I mean, as awful as it is to have to use the porta potties, I liked the original design that we were talking about earlier. To include, um, that, to be part of a building project so that we get that aid, that extra aid, we made a difference. But as far as the parking lot is concerned and we're to avoid the pooling, is there any plan to elevate that parking lot or grade it in any way? To help with the pool and with the water, or is that going to be part of it?
Yes, as part of, remember, this is a full-depth pavement replacement and so as part of that, we're going to be, uh, yes. We're going to be, I, I, I wouldn't say necessarily elevating the parking lot, but we are going to be creating new pitches to all of the drainage. As appropriate and we're going to be adding significant drainage as part of this process as well.
So, uh, just for me and then I have some stuff from Mel, so for me, I, I brought up the bathrooms again only because the last time the bathroom was like a standard room facility. With the, the locker room and the snack bar and, and all that, right? And so this question was more about if we just do a bathroom, because again, I think it's embarrassing that. You come to our, um, school or campus and we're porta potties. So I think if there's a way that we can figure out like a real cost of attaching that to the building and it works with the five hundred feet, I would be interested to know. What that would be, um, to, to get that done, um, so having said that, um. Brad had, um, Mel had some stuff and I know his own watch and so I'm going to read through, uh, some of his stuff and, and just. Uh, you guys can answer or adjust, uh, so the first one is related to, uh. Revamping the parking and, you know, the whole design, is that due to the failure of the town to do their due diligence? When approving the building for Dollar General?
Right, so, um, Tom can maybe speak to this too, um, my understanding is they did go through the process. However, whatever metrics that DOT uses to, to gauge whether a light is required or not, this did not meet the threshold. And that has kind of been indicated to us, uh, Tom, through the state engineer when our, when we had our initial meetings. Um, as far as, uh, he was pretty clear, he didn't believe that it was needed there. And also indicated that this would not have been, this would not be happening, uh, the light part of it. Without the political pressure put on by, uh, Senator Larkin, so, uh, Tom, can you speak to that anymore?
Yeah, I mean, they did do their due diligence and it was presented at the town level, um, and everything was cleared by both the town and the DOT. To approve that without a lighted intersection, we all thought it didn't make any sense, but. I think we're closer to understanding the traffic dynamics, especially during drop-off and pickup times, uh, at the district. And so, you know, I think that our traffic study was a lot more focused and I think presented a lot of, uh. Uh, presented a different perspective. and I think presented a lot of a, presented a different perspective. And when we did our intensive traffic study, it did prove very handily that a light was necessary there.
Now, I'll also say, the 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 town knew our position and and they weren't our greatest advocates throughout that. So they certainly could have, uh, um, been a little more forceful in in having that done.
And and remember, we're, we've, they've agreed to one light. We are continuing to pressure them for a second light as well. And they haven't rendered a decision on that yet.
Will several large trees in some of the middle school need to be cut down for this?
Uh, yeah, unfortunately, yes. I was down there today looking around. So we are going to have a number of, of large pine trees that have to come down. And also, I believe there's, there's three fairly large locust trees right in front of the middle school. One of those trees, it is not, uh, it is not in the best condition, I'll put it that way. There's a number of dead branches up in there that have to be trimmed every year. And, um, there's a bunch up there now that have to be looked at. Unfortunately, yes, and and Tom, would would your plan include replacing those trees somewhere else on the property?
I believe we do, well, not those specific trees. We're not going to tr- replant them. We're going to plant new trees, but, um, you know, we tried to work around the trees as best we could, uh, but certainly we have to weigh that against, you know, the proper, um, dynamics of how we want to get the buses to work for student safety. Uh, we also had to plan, as you all know, a lot of your septic fields run out in front of the school. And we had, uh, quite a bit of time to design around those systems so we didn't have to replace all your septic systems in the front as well. So it was it was quite the challenge. You have a lot going on in front of the building.
Checks off on his other questions? Auditoral improvements, any anything related to the stage itself?
Nothing related to the stage itself. So, uh, Mel was asking about the wood floor and, uh, the wood floor is is was noted in the visual inspection that was just done and and what you'll see when I get to my budget presentation is we will be able to take care of that, the stage floor and house, uh, I believe.
Right, and the the last question, if I understand it, um, the optional exit? Right, um, Mel was asking, and I think this is brilliant, uh, is there something to do now, like our own? You know?
So that would really depend on the DOT. First, they have to formally accept it before we can do anything with it.
I I could, I can only tell you my personal opinion after meeting with this engineer is, uh, I I don't think they're going to grant that to us. We'll we'll continue to ask and push for it. My my personal feeling is I do not believe they're going to allow us to have that exit there at this time. Doesn't mean we can can't continue to push for it down the road, but as for right now, I don't, I don't see it happening, just to be realistic.
Have you ever thought about lobbying that neighborhood next next door? Because there is a road that runs up to our property. We made a connector to there and then send everybody out there. Is there, has there been any discussion about that?
Years ago, we had discussions about purchasing a property that was for sale there right along, basically a bordering property. And, uh, there was talk about basically demoing the house and use that for additional parking or egress, but I I don't know what came of it.
Yeah. There wasn't any interest. There was enough interest at the one level, so.
Okay.
Well, we, I think we'd have to petition, but that certainly, if we don't get that other, uh, entrance, we could probably.
That would be, I would think that would just be a variance and then.
Yeah, we we have to apply to the town for that, Tom, right? I'm guessing.
Y- you would, yeah. Any kind of new road cut, you'd have to apply to the town. They they still maintain jurisdiction.
So, so Brad, what do you need tonight? Do you need anything from tonight or?
Um, well, basically, we we just need to to know the will of the board here. If the board has some interest to put this up in May, we're going to need you to approve formal resolutions at the next meeting. If the will of the board is to have bathroom facilities built in and present you with new numbers at the next meeting, I think Tom can do that and Jason is available to meet with us at the next meeting too, if you want him to walk me through the financials of it. But that that would be our last chance to really say, yeah, let's do it because the resolutions have got to be approved and we've got to get them in the forty-five day notice in the paper at the beginning of April.
Alright, so I think what we need to do is go member by member to say whether or not we think we want to put put this up now with or without bathrooms, basically, depending on what it is.
So can we do both? Can we put it up with and without? Is that a possibility?
You could do, you could do a progressive referendum and have it for the main project and then have a second proposition for the bathrooms adding on to it.
Yeah, where the first one doesn't pass, the second one is moved, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, and that gives us a little extra time. Could, again, the bathrooms, you know, to me, it's, you know, but.
It doesn't give us any extra time. It still has, it all has to be prepped and ready to go for the twenty-second, which is, which is fine. We can do that.
So, um, alright, so I'm going to go first, just because I can. So in my mind, I I think this is something we should put up. I mean, if you look at, and I'm just going to use the wish star, um, you know, seven dollars, eleven dollars, sixteen dollars a year to to do this, right? And I think we've been putting this off, putting this off, putting it off because it hasn't been a good time. And my idea is that there's not going to be a good time and and it's just, it could get worse, you know, and and we see the flags are out there, the state is starting to work on it. And and my biggest concern is that we're going to have extra lane out there, we're going to have traffic lights up with the potato sack over it and nothing's turned on because we haven't done our piece yet. And, you know, I know financially it's a, it's a hard time, but I I just feel like it it's not going to get any easier for us to do this. And, um, I think we should put it out to the public for consideration. So that's I'm starting to decide this time, Brian.
I agree with you, Joe. Um, I think that this is something that we've put off for a long time. It's definitely a much more scaled down version of what we originally planned to do. I don't think that there is a good time. Um, the way the traffic is right now with COVID, there isn't as much traffic. It's too bad that they couldn't be doing it now. It would have been a great time, but, um, we didn't. This is not the way it worked, but, um, I I don't, I think it would be a mistake to keep waiting.
I wish we could have a crystal ball to see, you know, when the payment raising will go down. It kind of stakes that are driving up so much, but that's not realistic. But I do think that there's enough opinion, um, within the public, enough people that want it, don't want it, but I think it should go to a lower for sure.
Alright. I'll leave it up to the voters.
Okay, so you're in favor of putting it to the public?
That's kind of what I was going to say. Um, I I am, I am in favor for putting it up. I I like the idea that it's much more scaled down to what we originally were talking about. Um, I do agree with something about bathrooms. Um, I I did like Kitty's idea of having it like the the regular and then the sec- the second. Um, but, and it is, it's a hard time for everyone. So at the end of the day, that that's why it's what for a vote and the voters get to decide and then we'll go from there.
Sir?
I agree.
I do, I think we just have to be clear on how we're going to put it up, uh, because we have to have those resolutions worded, um, correctly. So if if you guys do want to do it progressive, I I think we need to decide that tonight. Or if you just want to put it up as one, one proposition, bathrooms included.
Well, so based on, and and I think, so based on, if if you're having to do a destiny on attaching it to the building, right? So standard, I think you said half a million, if it was attached to the building, would that have gone with what that would be?
So, you know, attaching it to the building, i- it's, it's not going to garnish much aid. And the reason is because there's no educational space with it. So we'd have to have some conversations with SCD as to how they would look at it. But see, remember, previously we were attaching it to some Makerspace. And so we were using that overflow aid in the construction of the overall building to garnish it some aid. Well, here, if we just attach it as a toilet room facility, um, we don't, it's not going to be given any what they call BAUs. And so, you know, we'd have to have some conversations with SCD whether they would assign any building aid to it or not. I think the, I think the savings in attaching it to the building is that it's far less costly to do all of your utility tie-ins and electrical connections. Where running them across the site, especially with septic, becomes a more costly, um, uh, arrangement for a building that's standalone, it's out near the track facility.
Because originally, there were two bathrooms on the back of the building that used to be there. Which I guess now that they were taken down, we'll have to go by different guidelines to rebuild, right? You can't just put the two.
So, okay, so then the question is, understanding that it may not get state aid, do we want to do it separately or do we just want to include it?
I think it depends on the cost.
So. Can we, uh, estimate soon that we can send out to the board that we can decide? And do we need to do it all in one meeting or?
Well, does it really matter if it's part of, is it really going to be that much of a difference if it's separate or if it's together with everything else?
No, it's probably, it's probably a few hundred thousand dollars. I mean, if it's five hundred thousand as a standard room running electric sewer and water, attaching it to the building has to be, I mean, I'm not the guy, but it has to be.
It would be a assumption of this, yeah.
Right, because you're already connecting, like you said, to the other stuff.
I just, I like the idea of the progressive one because I know that there's people very passionate about safety, you know, the traffic in front of the school and they may not care about bathrooms. And so they may go a certain way because they're together.
Yeah.
That's my thought.
And I'm fine with that. Is that very, very progressive?
Yeah, I like that idea.
I'd rather not.
I would put it as one.
I I put this one too, but.
I like the progressive.
Okay, so let's move into it.
I would say we also have some, let me make my vote clear. I'm not voting to have bathrooms installed. I'm voting for what proposal here, the twelve, whatever, twelve by a million, and that's it.
Okay, so we're three, two, one. So let's go to progressive then.
One of the things that we do have the ability, this this pricing is based on a hundred and twenty-five thousand coming out of the capital reserve. And we do have some additional monies in there. I believe we have another probably two hundred and fifty thousand that we could pull out earmarked directly towards that, that bathroom facility, um, which would help kind of offset the costs to taxpayers, if that helps at all.
And I'll get you, I'll get you some updated costs, uh, with the attachment to the building, uh, probably, probably close to the end of the week.
Okay, so.
So if you were to use money from capital reserve, does that impact how you would put it up to vote?
Uh, no, I don't believe so because that resolution, the the money is coming in also has to be approved by the taxpayer. So it's just, it's the amount that you're financing and it's the voter approval to say, yes, we approve them using your money, you know, that money out of the capital reserve to do so. I hope you talk to Paul Wright, well, he's our our bond counsel tomorrow and just tell him, ask him if it's even possible for him to write the re- resolution both ways and see if he can look at it that way, but I know we're running out of time here, so.
Okay, so so just, I just want to make sure I have it right. So for the purposes of what we said here, we have three in favor of progression. We have two in favor of including it and one not in favor at all. So that gives you direction maybe, right?
Clear as mud.
Happy to help.
Okay, alright, so I think we're done with you. Tom, thank you.
So Tom will, you you put together your plan and talk to the board at the next meeting on the on the twenty-second, right, Tom?
Yep, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Anytime, anytime.
Appreciate your help, Tom.
Alright, next on the agenda is budget presentation.
Sorry, yeah, I I got started here. So, uh, tonight we're going to take a look at, uh, curriculum and instruction, special education, BOCES, athletics, transportation, operations and maintenance, uh, fund balance and and revenue, which we kind of already hit on in January, but we'll touch on them again. Obviously, today is March eighth. Uh, we're we're rapidly approaching, uh, May eighteenth, so we're about two and a half months out at this point. At our next meeting, we'll be presented with the full, uh, top to bottom budget and we'll have, uh, you know, some time after that, we have a meeting on the twelfth to talk about it more. But, uh, the budget hearing will be on May tenth and the budget vote may be eighteen. So we've presented these in the past, I think in the essence of time, we're going to just kind of skip over the goals here and our guiding principles for, uh, curriculum and instruction budget right now. The mission of the Valley Central School District is to ensure that all students be given the opportunity to acquire the knowledge and skill necessary to enable them to become successful members of society. This statement is founded on prevailing spirit of optimism, which embraces the philosophy that all students. We aspire to be the top five school districts in Orange County on all educational measures, including social, emotional learning and racial and social equity. Here's our values and stick over these and get right to, uh, Mary Ann for our curriculum instruction goals.
Right, quick technology question. Is that blocking the audience who say in that or is it just here?
Nope, just here, yeah.
So I'm glad that Brad went through that really quickly, but I did want to say one thing. In our goal about attracting and retaining non-dedicated staff, uh, at some point, which we do want, and that we're diversified into that goal as well. And also, um, in serving as a cornerstone of the community, um, you have to remember that this is no more important time than now that we are providing resources and support for our families. The aspiration that we had is actually true, but I added, just so if you were to look at our board improvement, I added the including social, emotional and racial and social equity because many times people will say, what do you mean on all key educational measures? Is that just academic? And it's not, and it includes on all measures of a successful school district.
Very cool.
So the goals of the, um, curriculum, the Department of Curriculum Instruction are to meet the needs of the whole student academically, socially, we need to create programs and opportunities to fill the gaps created by COVID-nineteen. Uh, we need to provide relevant and differentiated, inspiring special development to support not only innovative teaching, but culturally inclusive instruction and social emotional learning. And we always want to nurture a community of learners with a growth mindset. Some of the curriculum projects that you're going to see are some that we had on last year's, um, budget because either they're not finished or because of COVID, we did not have an opportunity to implement that. Summer School two thousand twenty-one is a very big initiative, so we'll be working hard at that and making sure that, the one thing we would like to do this year that we've never done in the past is to provide transportation. That is huge. Um, transportation is a big issue of why some children come and some do not. So as I said, we want to service about between three hundred and twenty-five and three hundred and fifty elementary students, add a social, emotional piece to the middle school and continue with the high school program. And I need to meet with those principals to see if there's any changes to that.
This will give me another example of just trying to make lemonade out of lemon. So we're going to take some of the savings that we saw this year and apply it as fund balance to to cover the transportation costs or the summer, knowing that it's a one-shot deal, um, and not expect it to continue in the future.
So in addition, we need to start looking at programs to lessen the gap, whether that is, um, revamping our academic intervention services, our refreshing teachers in the area of Orange and Gillingham, training more teachers in Orange and Gillingham, but we're looking now on programs to lessen the gap. Our racial and social equity initiative, we've been speaking about that, we'll be using funding from curriculum to support that. The enhancement of our K-twelve STEAM program, that has been a goal of the Valley Central School District for many years and so we will continue with that. Our high school science curriculum writing, next generation, um, learning standards are going to be, needed to be implemented shortly. So we need to rewrite the curriculum since several of the science curriculum supporting the five E model in science, which is more exploratory, digital literacy. There are new digital literacy standards. Next year is the first year where we have to start growing into them. And by I think it's two thousand twenty-four, they will need to be implemented, um, a hundred percent. We'll continue with our social studies initiatives in the high school. We'll continue with our social studies initiatives in the high school. So the practical assessment exploration system for life skills, that is a program that's gonna be used in, in lieu of going out into the workplace. So what that is, it is a program where our life skills students learn valuable skills through hands-on job exploration activities. There's hands-on piece, and there's a computerized piece. They go through different modules, and that's where that they are, they are introduced to more careers and more skills than they would in our current system. And this is a recommendation from Mrs. Butler. At the middle school, we are actually adding electives to decrease study halls. That is gonna be done with our current staff. A lot of children, some that don't take music, or are interested in art sometimes, if there are two study halls a day. So utilizing our current staff, we are developing high-interest electives at the middle school. They will not require a lot of added homework or added assignments. There are gonna be a lot of hands-on, high interest, and they will lead into the electives that are at the high school. So for example, if there's a film in literature class at the high school, we'll have a modified version at the middle school that will be created so that the next step will be an elective at the high school. We continue to look at our electives at the high school and make sure we're utilizing the existing staff and that we are not running electives that children are not attending, and we're changing the curriculums to get them more interested. We're adding some, we have a music and technology elective that we would like to be adding, but it looks like we won't be doing that this year. That would be in the next year. We need to revamp our library media scope and sequence, as well as our art, so we'll be doing that this year. We will continue with our culturally inclusive instruction initiative. A lot of what exactly we do with that is going to come out of the race and social equity district committee and the building level teams. So we will take their subcommittees in that group that will lead us toward exactly what type of professional development and curriculum overview we're doing. We are, next year will be in our third year, year of Yale Ruler, and that is the year in which we involve students and families more. The families, the students are involved. We will continue with safe school ambassadors, expand upon the mental health curriculum, restore the justice training. We recommend that we don't do a big training next year, but that we do a small cohort of administrators and perhaps some teachers. Inspiring Comfort is a program that we're gonna introduce with the administrators this summer. I can go into more specifics at another time, but it is, it is a woman who dealt with Sandy Hook after that tragedy, and she has written some wonderful books. I had an opportunity to speak with her at length. And because we feel that the administrative teachers have gone through trauma, we need to kind of evaluate what we're sprung at, what we are weak at in our dealings with other people, and develop a, a plan on being better communicators. Professional development, some of this is extensions from last year, our robotic professional development, advanced placement, PG, math training for the middle school, ongoing professional development such as literacy for all. And we also have a piece in our budget line so that our teachers can provide professional development themselves to their peers after school. Again, I've already spoken about the culturally inclusive instruction and professional learning communities is something that had to be put on hold this year because of COVID. We had a relationship with the superintendent from New Windsor that was training us, and we had to put that on hold. We'd like to continue with that. Our STEAM training, multi-tiered system of support, is training that we've done through Jim Wright that we'd like to continue with. Homework and grading, that's an issue that was on the forefront when we were talking about homework. We have a homework policy. The next step was to dive into our grading procedures and policies, and then state conferences for specific client areas. The budget also supports our assessment and feedback systems, which are RTI, Edge, and WEA in school. And as always, we are currently looking at all existing personnel and the requests from district administrators in order to determine how we can reallocate whenever we have requirements. We look to see if it is possible that we can do without replacing that position.
And to piggyback off of that, thank you, draw your attention to this top line here for instructional salaries. You can see that our adopted budget, oops, last year was twenty, for instructional salaries, which brings, which brings in all our general ed teacher salaries, our subs, our long-term subs, apartment chair stipends, credits and lien changes are all built into this area of the budget. We did see a decrease from what was budgeted the year before, and as the budget stands right now, we will see another decrease in that area of the budget going into next year. To bring you back, last year, we had twelve positions that we did not replace through retirements and reallocations, and there will be not quite twelve this year, but we do expect to bring a number of them to you as a recommendation at the next meeting. Non-instructional salaries, this area of the budget is basically all our paras that are in the general ed category of the budget, not our special ed. The contractual line here makes up things like our professional development, student debatable hearings, science and LPI. And actually, Walden, I don't know if you saw on Facebook, just did some virtual field trips. We were able to pick for them out of this instructional contractual line. Supplies is all instructional supplies across the district. RPE, social studies, computer, you name it, including our paper comes out of that line. The curriculum and instruction portion of the budget, so this, this area of the budget is Mary Ann and Tammy Coleman and the office, the non-instructional is our staff that supports that office. Moving forward, we're gonna dive into special education and BOCs. So this is an update on the slide from last year. You did see that our classification rate did tick up a bit, eighteen, nineteen, from seventeen, eighteen. This data at the state level does lag a few years back. This slide, we looked at last year, which I'm gonna bring to your attention. I want you to look at this, the sixty-four number for preschool students with disabilities. This would be seventeen, eighteen data, and then we can go forward to the eighteen, nineteen data, which jumps up to ninety-four preschool students with disabilities. So this is a trend that unfortunately, that I think we're seeing continue. One of the positions that'll be recommended in the superintendent's budget is the creation of a new eight-one-two classroom in Walden. We do have a group of high needs preschoolers that are coming in, and we will staff that position through a reallocation of another position in the budget. So as you can see, sixty-four to ninety-four, and this is eighteen, nineteen data, so it'll be interesting to take a look at it when the next round of data comes out. Here's our classification by category, and I can, just wanted to bring your attention to one thing here is the speech line in the middle. You can see our speech numbers are creeping up every year, one oh seven, one oh eight, one twenty-two to one thirty-three. This kind of mirrors what we're hearing when we meet with principals and staff here, is that our speech therapists are drowning, and they cannot keep up. So one of the requests that has been made would be an additional speech teacher. At this point, we're not quite sure if the budget will be able to support it, but it's something that we're looking at, and we'll have a recommendation at the next board meeting. CSC placements, you've had a chance to review this data, so I won't spend too much time on it. And here's our overall special education budget at a very high level. So instructional salaries, that contains all our special ed salaries, our speech, our physical therapists, all our subs. Non-instructional, that contains our occupational therapists, our special ed paras, subs, our PT assistants. Out of the contractual line, we pay for special ed settlements, tutoring services, sign language resource, behavioral services, dues and conferences, and when we need to pay for evaluations for students. BOCs, we spend a lot of money at BOCs every year. They provide a lot of services for us from budget vote personnel, oh, and facility services that were out here this week doing lead testing, or, or they will be out here very soon. Data processing, they handle a lot of our students' information data that goes through the, the rig that gets reported up to Albany. Mary Ann works with them a lot for curriculum development, staff development. They obviously play a big role in our special education, our CTEC students. Right on down to print shop services, the, the pictures that you see on our walls were printed on our BOCs. They also do our student planners, and the print shop came up huge for us last year when we found out on another Friday night that our ballots weren't gonna be mailed to Buffalo, and we had to get that turned around and printed, stuffed, and mailed by the previous, or by the next Tuesday. They do a lot with athletics as well, and we're part of posters where they handle our workers' compensation and our health, the orange poster health plan. So overall, it's a pretty large chunk of our budget, seventy-two million dollars was the budget last year, and right now we're proposing a two percent increase to seven-point-four million dollars. Athletics, a lot of this is a repeat over the slides that were in here last year, only because we just don't have numbers to put some of these programs right now. But based on the eighteen, nineteen-year data, fifteen programs, baseball, basketball, cheer, cross-country football, golf, lacrosse, soccer, softball, swimming and diving, tennis, track, unified basketball, volleyball, and wrestling. One of the things we do hope to bring to you at the next meeting as a recommendation is a gymnastic program. There was apparently some, a few parents that were watching the board meeting where we did have some discussions about it. So they reached out to, I know Rich and Bill. Rich has been working hard to take a good look at the budget to see if we may be able to do it within the existing monies in the budget. So we're hopeful to be able to offer that, and if we are able to, to get your approval and do that, we believe that we have potentially a pretty solid coach that would be interested in, in working with the girls here. So we're hoping to bring that to you at the next meeting.
Would that be a girl's sport, or would that be an open sport to anybody?
If it's, it would be open. Yep. So we're, we're hoping we can bring that to you at the next meeting. Fall of two thousand nineteen, we had seven teams recognized that had fall season's dollar athletes, and we also had three additional athletes recognized from the boys cross-country for having a grade point average of ninety and above. So a high-level look at the athletics budget, so our instructional salaries, that will be the AD position and the coaching stipends. Non-instructional, that's the office for contractual, it covers our costs for reconditioning and helmets, entry fees, section nine athletic fees, and of course, supplies is everything that we need to operate that, footwear, blocks for the pool, and general supplies and equipment. Operations and maintenance, so our guys here, they, they do a lot of work, and we're able to pull off a lot of small projects around the, the district that need to be done. So I kind of skimmed through these kind of fast, but the high school last year, our second floor lockers were painted. We replaced the gymnasium scoreboard and painted, painting throughout the building and the parking lot. At the middle school, LED lightings were installed in the hallways, reader's desk was relocated, general painting throughout. A tree was removed out in the front. Unfortunately, there was a, a large oak tree that was just way too close to the building, and that had to come down, and we installed heaters and invested fuel. The pool, the pool was rerouted last year. Thanks to your support on that, that was long overdue, so we were able to get that taken care of. We did a lot of pump system maintenance. As Tom mentioned in his presentation, Ryan does a very good job of, of taking care of the pool. It's, it's our baby down there. It does bring in some revenue for us in normal times when we're able to get some rental fees out of it and have some competitions, but unfortunately, that hasn't happened yet this year. East Colton Ham, washer and dryer was installed, or in the main office, LED lights in the cafeteria, new roof on the storage shed. Maria here, we did, actually just recently, we finished up some sidewalk repairs out front of the building where we had the curb, and where the sidewalk meets the curb, and it settled a good two and a half to three inches. It was tripped hazard there, so we just tried to stay on top of those types of things. And one of the things we've seen over the last few years is, is an increase in our insurance rates due to the amount of claims that have been filed, and nothing significant, but it's just general claims where a slip, a fall, or a student on a playground, those things add up, and our insurance rates have, have gone up by the double digit, double digits over the last few years. So we're trying to do a better job of staying on top of things like this. Montgomery, again, thanks to your support for the, the pavement bid that we, that we did and got in place. We're able to have some repairs done. Montgomery parking lot, that, that was something that was original, originally included in the last project, which was stripped out. Montgomery is in very bad need of a redesign there as far as traffic and for both buses and parents. So hopefully in the future, we're able to do something, but for right now, we did the best we could. We put a top code over the staff parking lot, and I don't have a picture here to show you, but on the parent lot, we were able to redirect some traffic for a student drop-off zone, which I think has, has helped. And then we were able to put a left-hand turn lane in coming out of that, which I can only tell you as a parent that I've seen a difference down there. Walden, I wish I could show you a before and after of, of this room. This, this floor was in very bad shape, and this project was handled, again, in-house by our, by our guys. I think we did have a contractor that helped us with some concrete work on a Saturday, but our, our guys basically did all the work here. So there was an old interior, interiorated concrete floor that had been covered over by basically furring strips of two-by-fours or whatever, plywood laid on top of that, and due to moisture or whatever, it, it had basically worn through, kind of where those two boxes come together. If you stepped there, there was, your foot went down, you know, an inch or two. So when they started ripping it apart and getting down to see what the issue was, we realized the whole floor had to come out. So the whole carpet, the wood floor came out, they poured a new concrete slab over it, and then new vinyl tile over top of that. In addition, they did some new shrubs and plants outside, another roof on a storage shed, washer and dryer at Walden as well. And the hallway carpets were finally, we, we got rid of them. Another in-house project, those are all our guys there. They've seen the picture. They really busted their butts over there. It was hot, it was disgusting, but they did it, and I think for whatever we can do for Walden, little projects like this go a long way. So kudos to our guys and Ryan for taking care of that. ALC, we were able to get that parking lot repainted last year, and painting throughout the building. Another new classroom floor there. I don't believe that was, no, no concrete involved in that one. With vinyl tiles. Athletics, the cross-country bridges were replaced. I didn't even know we had bridges until Ryan told me we were doing it, and then again, this is another instance where I could show you before and after. But again, our guys did it in-house, and they did a pretty good job. So coming soon, so as Tom mentioned, we just had the visual inspection done, and literally just hit submit on the forms. The next step will be to review with the Health and Safety Committee. Bottom line is, believe it or not, based on the metrics that they use, there was only one building in the entire district that, that passed, that had a passing grade, and it's this building. Everything else uses the term failed, unfortunately, but they're just items that need to be addressed. And, and really, this is, this is the sum of it. So I put them here to let you know, they, they are, we're going to do as much as we can in-house with the budget that will support it, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done around this district. And this doesn't even take into account the big-ticket items, like, so next year, the building condition survey will have to be done. So with that, you know, I think boilers will get thrown into that. We know, we have got three boilers down at the high school. One has been down for most of the winter. There's a, a number of tube cylinders that go through it that need to be replaced. So another, a very expensive repair, and then, so those boilers, I believe, are from nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine-ish. They're well past their useful life. Boilers in East Colton Ham are original to the building, believe it or not. They need to be done. Boilers in East Colton Ham are original to the building, believe it or not, they need to be done. But just to go through this list, pavement repairs, sidewalk repairs, exterior step repairs, windows and doors. We already had some conversations about the front door out here. If you pay close attention to it when you walk out, you'll see that there's areas of rust and deterioration at the bottom. And and also if you look closely, you can see where it has shifted off to an angle. And Ellen's back, the name's Ellen, she's back in over there. I was trying to be so good on taking the minutes and I didn't have to do it. General roof repairs, district-wide, we've had a period here of a number of years, but we have not had to do roof repairs. So eventually we're going to be faced that putting those roofs on a schedule, I've already talked to Ryan about that. Let's plan ahead, let's plan years down the road so we know when we have to do it. We can utilize our capital reserve fund if we have money left over at the end of the year to stick in there. But it's not something that you want to let sneak up on you. Wood flooring repairs, that was brought up in the visual inspection report, Montgomery Elementary. And then the middle school and high school stages were were both items that needed to be repaired. Stormwater, general gutter repairs around the district, one of the things that they mentioned was downspouts at Berea. We have chimney cracks at Berea, fields, playground repairs, fencing repairs district-wide and bleacher repair at DC. So I just throw them out there to let you know, we do have a lot of things we need to do. So the Walden repairs, you remember last year, this this picture is is directly above the exit door where the kids go out to the upper playground. I don't know whatever door they want to call it, but we did have that chunk of concrete. We were very, very fortunate that nobody was seriously injured on that. So if you remember, it was a few minutes actually after a class had gone out to the playground where a chunk of concrete fell and sprayed over the door onto the concrete steps there. And this, so what's going to be involved in this repair would be a, like an encasement of that soffit around the whole building. So it's not, i- i- in general, it's not a huge project. We are going to recommend including that in next year's budget as a capital outlay project. It's roughly three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. There's an advantage for us to do it out of pocket versus finance it. One is, it it needs to be done, so it's not like we can include it in a project. And, you know, if the project does go down in May, then we're looking at a whole nother year to do it. But it it's small enough where we we can take take advantage and do it in-house. We will receive the aid on it and the estimated completion date for this would be spring and summer of twenty twenty-two. Operations and maintenance budget, our salaries include our director of facilities, all custodians and all maintenance staff. Two point nine million dollars is the preliminary budget for next year. Equipment, this is for items that anything over roughly fifteen hundred dollars, I think, is a board policy on that. That need to be purchased either as a as a repair, like a water heater or a piece of equipment that Ryan needs to replace, whether it be a lawnmower, a snow blower, things like that. Contractual and supplies, two point one million dollars. And our our total for facility operations, maintenance portion of our budget is five point one million dollars. Trying to hold that as steady as possible going into next year. Transportation, so transportation, one of the things that the voters need to be aware of in this project or in this product in this vote coming up is that, so everybody knows we had a mid-year change in contractors due to the bankruptcy of Orange County Transit. First student was awarded the RFP, currently operating on a six-month contract. And the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year will be the first year of a five-year contract for home-to-school, fielding sports trips and summer school transportation. So it's a state requirement that multi-year transportation contracts require over approval. There does not need to be a separate proposition on the budget, there does not need to be a separate line. Only, the only thing that's required is that voters are aware of that their approval of this budget constitutes the approval of a multi-year contract, transportation contract. So we need to talk about it in our budget presentations, which we're doing tonight. We need to talk about it at the public hearing, which we'll do on May tenth. And then it has to be noted in the budget newsletter that goes out to the the voters in May. So that'll all be in there. And a requirement is the state that they, you have to give a projected cost over the lifetime of the contract. And our projected total cost over the next five years is estimated to be roughly thirty-eight million, seven hundred thousand dollars. That's over the five years, not yearly. Our transportation fleet currently consists of thirty-six large buses, thirty small buses, six wheelchairs and three small community vans is the comp. Obviously, we serve all our in-district schools. We go to the Orange Ulster, Rockland and Duchess BOSsies, as well as Abilities First, Center for Discovery in Deveraux. We service the parochial schools of Burke, St. John, Harmony, Chapel Fields, Bishop Dunn, Most Precious Blood. And we also serve the private schools of Birch and Storm King. And approximately three hundred individual routes operate each day. We are going to see an increase in our transportation budget due to the fact that we did an RFP last year. We are going to see an increase in costs here. Our our basic transportation contract will go up from two point eight to three point three. Our special ed is estimated to go from one point five to one point seven and all their one point six to to one point eight. Transportation is one of these options, one of these things we talked a lot about at our budget presentation last year because transportation is, aid on transportation is is expense-based. So your your aid in next year fiscal year is generated on your expenses this year. And we know that our expenses are going to be way down this year due to the fact that between September and, well, September and November, we did, we ran four days a week. We did not run at all during the months of December and we only ran a half a month in January. So we are going to see a significant savings this year. What that means is our aid will be reduced next year, so we're going to have to apply fund balance, kind of like what we did last year to offset that and it'll catch itself back up. But we're just going through a weird little cycle here where with these expense-based aids and transportation as our as our biggest one, we are going to have to set aside some extra money in the budget to offset that reduction in aid next year. That money that we that we apply in in the form of fund balance next year is generated from our savings this year. So it's basically just taking money from this year, applying it to fill the gap next year. And when we do get back to normal, we hope that next year is a normal run. We will not need to apply that fund balance going forward. These are, this is the same slide that we approved or that we talked about in January. So we're going to finalize these numbers when we come up with a final final budget number, hopefully this week. As far as the appropriated reserves go, I expect that to be right around the two hundred and fifty, slightly possibly up to three hundred and fifty thousand. Again, just for the TRS portion of the budget. As I talked about last last year, we do have that reserve. They're supposed to be used for for what they're there for. So we are going to appropriate a similar amount of money there. Appropriate fund balance, remember, part of that four point eight million that was appropriated last year was one point five million dollars for transportation and another two hundred thousand for our unemployment expenses that we that we saw an increase of. So as we have been talking, that that total of the three point four million dollars that was applied in eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty, as it was appropriated as fund balance and also reserves that were appropriated. We changed it last year, this was based on the recommendation of of our new external auditors because that appropriated reserves is really to pay for those specific expenses. And and the reserve that had been appropriated was our tax surcharge reserve. So the correct way to do that is at the end of the year, when that reserve expires, it turns into fund balance. That being said, we knew that we have, that reserve that had been used is declining. So for example, the reserve that was closed, appropriated into fund balance this year was one point two million dollars. The reserve that's going to close this year, that we can continue the same practice to help slowly wean ourselves off of that is roughly seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, I believe. So that is why, you you heard me say it last year, you'll hear me say it again. We do have to have a plan to slowly get down away from that total amount of fund balance that is applied. So when you take that, that, you know, our our reserves and our fund balance, we have five hundred thousand dollars less to use next year. You take our state aid, which is essentially flat now going in for two straight years. Really, we are we are being squeezed from a couple of different ends here and it's no fun. Our reserves, they are what they are. Here is our our capital reserve at three hundred and fifty-six thousand. So that would be the money that we can take and appropriate to offset the cost of the bathroom facility up behind the high school. So if you figure we can take three fifty out of here, if Tom says it costs five to five fifty, I think the impact of taxpayers should be kind of minimal. Our revenues, obviously our revenues need to equal our expenditures. Our tax levy limit next year will be two point eight six percent, same exact as it was last year. And we do strive for consistency, so that's good. Next year, depending on what happens with a with a couple of different things, I can tell you just if we use the same factors this year as far as the brick and mortar growth and CPI and take into account that we are going to have some pilot revenue that falls off next year, it's estimated, it's very early estimate, but it will be in the low three percent range as far as the tax gap. And there's a couple of different things that we can look at doing as far as appropriating some extra debt service money that we have. But we'd like to try to keep that as consistent as possible and avoid any of those ups and downs. But I think you heard Jason talk a little bit about during his presentation. So on this slide here for revenue, I just, I just pull your attention here to state aid and look at that increase. And how do we run a hundred and ten million dollar school budget when our our state aid is going on roughly a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars next year? It's it's not sustainable, especially when they don't supplement districts for your additional COVID expenses. We've been fortunate to see some savings areas of the budget this year. We've also seen that offset by expenses in other areas of the budget. But this will be two straight years now where our state aid is basically frozen at zero. So we're going to become more reliant on property taxes, unfortunately. One of the other things, if I can bring your attention down to the interest and earnings line. So this would be an interest that we earn on our money that's in the bank. Unfortunately, we we do feel like we have to reduce that by eight thousand next year because interest rates are are in the tank, they're in the toilet, we're not getting anything. And even, you know, Jackie kind of cringes that we're that we're going to budget a hundred and eighty thousand in revenue for this because I think she will be lucky this year we see a hundred and twenty thousand. So we feel like this, you know, we're trying to take it down in steps if we have to go more next year. To kind of bring it back to our initial budget last year, we were looking at increasing that two sixty to three sixty, I believe. And then when COVID hit and we got our state aid, state aid was was cut back. That was another budget line that we had to go back and and trim back. But the line at the bottom, on on other unclassified revenue, we're seeing a sixty thousand dollar reduction here, but it's kind of a reclass because forty, you're going to see a forty thousand dollars up and the other fees and charges. And and I'm sorry, I don't remember the specifics are on what, what is in each one of these lines up top of my head and I forgot to write down a note, but we are going to see a twenty thousand dollar reduction here between the two. And that's, that's where we're at. We we don't expect to have to lay anybody off in this next, when we present the budget to you next next week. We're taking a good hard look again, two years in a row, not replacing any retirements that we can, reallocating from within. But as far as any additional revenue that that's possibly come from the state this year, and I think what we're hearing from the Senator is saying it's possible. We may, we may see a little extra money out of the out of the state, it would be very helpful for us. But another year, same old, same old, we're just struggling to maintain what we have. Any questions? Sorry, that was a little lot, I have two meetings rolled into one.
We'll go around Diane when it's time to do questions.
I just have one about the bus thing you said, when you said that the budget has to pass some word for that contract, what happens if it doesn't?
If it doesn't, the state allows you to appoint them for a one year. So they'll be our bus contractor next year regardless, but let's just say the budget fails in May and fails in June. The state is aware, you don't have time to redo your whole bus contract in a few weeks. So you're allowed to appoint them on a one-year basis and then put it back out to the voters again or I don't know what the reason for it is, you know, I possibly, if you were going to go to another contractor that we've already had experience with, the voters are going to say absolutely not, no way, you're not using them, that's what their office, I'm not sure. But we'll be all right for next year, but voters just need to be aware that they're approving a multi-year contract of that size.
I noticed, Marianne, that you, there were a lot of hands-on activities that were put into the the curriculum aspect. I hope we're able to use them this year.
That's what, I mean, they were in the budget last year, I think we gave this presentation last year in February and then March. February, March and then right after we gave it, COVID. We really lost a lot with the steam. But I think we'll get it right back, I mean, they've been doing a great job this year. They're using those iPads to do robotics and 3D printing. So even the kids at home are able to code and then they print it in and they send it home.
This COVID is obviously out of the life of its own. Marianne has said to me repeatedly when she was down, she said, I created a great summer school. She said, I just can't wait to get back to be doing the work that we started in, we can put this behind the sentence. But I think this probably won't happen, but we, it has taken everything off the plate this year, just to kind of survive. She's done a great job of that, I know she's anxious to get back to her real job when she was passionate for it.
I have the same transportation question, so thank you. What happens to summer school if the budget doesn't pass?
So we're going to fund, we're not funding summer school based on a recurring revenue. So it goes back to what you were saying here, we're trying to make lemonade out of lemon. So what we're going to do is take some areas of the budget where we've seen savings this year and reappropriate that as a as a one-time expense to an expanded summer school program. So you guys can do a couple of things if the budget fails. We could pull it out, but just know that we don't want to take that fund balance that's going to be applied for summer school and apply it to keep, you know, unfortunately staff because we're going to have to pay the staff, you know, the following year and that fund balance will be gone. So it's really for a one, a one-shot thing and that's what we expect us to be.
I would agree with the whole transportation thing for summer school. I think that that's a great idea.
Yeah. We feel like it'll be an opportunity if schools were in favor of it. Who we're looking at, in addition to our regular special education, which they obviously get busing during summer, but we're looking at running about ten to twelve large buses for twenty-four days, I think.
Twenty-four days for the elementary.
So I mean, it'll be, it'll be a cost, we'll get some aid back on it the following year. We do feel like it'll help get some kids into school.
Question that you may not, let me ask you, but so I'm sorry by thanking Ryan and his team for all the in-house work because that certainly is good to do and saves us money. I'm curious, we haven't talked about it a long time. Whatever happened with the East Colton Ham gym floor? Remember when it rained, it would come up and like a seventh grader could dunk because the floors, I'm not exaggerating.
Those are more, it's ugly, we had again.
A couple of years ago.
It was repaired, but it's, it started to creep back up, I think there are a couple of little spots.
Okay, that's true. The other thing, good that we're doing the wall and roof and this more statement, but I know we talked about this for next year, trying to come up. You know, start working on some kind of long-term strategy for Walden, I think that's something important, get the community and and do all that. Keep keep an eye on that.
I'm sorry about that, I've been on the board for six years prior to this, but we have talked for years and years about the need to do something for Walden. And we've just never, we've never gotten it off the ground.
On the tax levy slide. You have subtract two point eight million for projecting pilots, what is that?
So we have to take out our. Which slide? Which slide?
Tax levy 2.6.
Yeah, that's part of the tax cap formula. So.
So what is what is that? Projecting pilots was subtracting 2.8.
So it's the way that the formula works. So in order to calculate your tax levy for this year, um there's two parts of it. So the the first part is to um add back in your your pilots from the year before and you subtract out, right? So in the bottom part of it, you track you subtract it out from your tax levy. Well, you're going to collect in payments for this year. But in order to get to that number that you base that off of, you have to add back in your pilots from last year, I believe, which you see up at the uh part of your policy, add that. So again, I'm not an expert on how the formula works and how it affects, but it it's basically the more pilot revenue that you get, the less that your tax levy can go up. It it handcuffs you that way. Likewise, when the pilot revenue starts to drop off, your your tax cap or it goes up. So what what we're going to see next year is our tax gap wouldn't be 2.8 or 6%. It's going to be higher because the pilot payments are coming are coming off.
Okay. And then just last, just like a generic question. Uh we talked, you know, obviously a lot about COVID and so from a budget perspective. And and I think I heard you say this, but as far as what we may have seen because of COVID, we spent because of COVID. Is that like it's kind of washed? Is that?
Yeah, so um what areas of the budget that we've seen savings uh for COVID utilities? So we were able to reduce our garbage pickup. Our electric is running about 80,000 dollars ahead of where we expected it to be at this point. Um you just talked about conferences and professional development, in-house staff development. That has not happened this year. Um little things like student legal student hearings, where we have hearing officers, I'm hearing hundreds of dollars an hour. That has not happened or happened. Um staffing. So when we were looking at the 20% A cut. We put a hiring freeze on all staffing. We did not fill certain positions. So we've seen savings um there. Um for example, we didn't fill the deputy superintendent position. We relocated from within. Uh student assistance counselor at the high school, that had not been filled prior to this year. We decided not to fill that. We real allocated for all. Um transportation, we're seeing big savings there. CTEC, uh a seat, one seat at CTEC costs us almost 12,000 dollars, I believe. And we did not fill all those seats this year because of the whole, you know, the remote instruction and things like that. So we didn't necessarily lose money because you have uh the way the CTEC works is you have eight in October that you have to to back out and uh or to drop. So there was a a number of CTEC, not a lot, but um definitely some uh savings there. Subs, uh we have not been able to get subs in our buildings. Um so we're going to see uh savings in that area of the budget. Team leaders, we didn't we didn't have team leaders this year. So we're going to see savings in that area of the budget. Close. Where are we seeing expenses? So partitions, so not only the expense of the the partitions on the desks, but also just prior to the year for the greeters desks. Um Ryan purchased the those polycarbon, uh what you see out here. He also purchased um dividers between desks that are close together in the offices, internet hotspots. I don't even know how many of those we purchased, but it's uh oh my gosh, that's expensive. And not only do you have the the cost for the device, but you have the monthly cost for the internet. Chromebooks, uh so we spent, oh my gosh, uh almost 300,000 dollars on Chromebooks in September and they're still not here. Um document cameras, and then we bought a document camera for every teacher in the district. Um like that camera that you see up there that's filming this, uh similar to that. Thermometers, we just had placed another order. I think we ordered 20 more thermometers, district-wide signage. Um if you go into the buildings, you see the signs all over. We're good. We're buying signage now for the athletic fields. Cleaning supplies uh have gone up. Um we're going to see a significant loss in cafeteria again this year. Last year, we lost approximately 200,000 dollars um prior to the uh in uh implementation of that the the summer or whatever feeding program we're on now where it's free for everybody. We were projecting over 500,000 dollar loss in that area. So that's that's going to be a huge impact for us. Um the essential worker childcare that we paid for over the summer, uh we are not currently paying for that any longer, but we did pay for that for for a portion of the year. Uh legal expenses uh in regards to HR, I don't think Phil is on the phone with with our labor council multiple times every day. So there's there's costs there and unemployment expenses, which is kind of dribbled off here a little bit. Not so not as severe as they were, but um unemployment costs that we had paid from back in spring. So.
So it's a wash.
It's it's a wash slash we will have some money left over to do some things like summer school and and the, yeah. So overall, um you're right, we call it a wash.
All right. Anything else for Brad? One other quick thing I want to go back to for the uh bond project. If we can talk maybe for the next meeting about some kind of communication plan that we're going to use with the public, you can aware of it. And just because I think the more we get uh information out there, I I think the better. As far as uh that's um, okay. All right, very good. All right. So that is it for old business. Now we move on to new business. Okay, uh first thing on new business is the establishment of the 2021 annual meeting procedures.
Give me a second to get my bearings here. So for these resolutions, we will need a roll call vote, but the first one on our agenda here is the annual district election and budget vote. Uh and public hearing resolution. So these were included in your package. You've had a chance to review them. So I'm not going to read the resolution in in its entirety. Um however, this the first one is establishing the public hearing for Monday, May 10th, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM. And it also establishes the notice of annual district election and budget vote. And uh notice is hereby given that the annual district election and budget vote will be held on Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. So if there is a motion on that. Motion by Katie.
I'll second.
Second by Sarah and then uh I'll call the rolls. So Mr. Fitzgerald, aye. Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. McKnight.
Yes.
Ms. Messing.
Yes.
Ms. Ravor.
Yes.
Uh Mr. Westenberg, he's absent. And Mr. Bond, yes. That motion passes 6-0. The next resolution is for the appointment of permanent chairperson and inspectors of election and assistant clerk. Um therefore be resolved that the Board of Education appoints uh Frank Teen. And the list of inspectors and alternate inspectors that were that were shared with you in your package. So is there a motion to approve this as written? Motion by Art.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Let's call the rolls. So Mr. Fitzgerald, aye. Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. McKnight.
Yes.
Ms. Messing.
Yes.
Ms. Ravor.
Yes.
Mr. Westenberg, absent. And Mr. Bond, yes. That motion passes 6-0. Sit on that. I'm happy to give it to anybody else that wants to do this.
So next item is the new petitions for board candidates. Thank you.
So if you are interested in running for a uh seat on the board, we do have two seats that are open this year. Uh the qualifications are you must be able to read and write, must be a qualified voter of the district, must be and have been a resident, but does not need to be a taxpayer uh of the district for a continuous and uninterrupted period of at least one year immediately prior to the election. You may not have been removed from any school district office within the preceding year. You may not reside with another member of the same school board as a member of the same family. You may not be a current employee of the school district and you may not simultaneously hold another incompatible public office. So all nominees will run at large, which means each nominee is eligible for every vacancy rather than only for a specific seat and nominating petitions do not state a specific seat. Nominating petitions will be available beginning March 8th, 2021 at the administration office, 944 State Route 17K Montgomery. Uh 2021 nominating petitions petitions must be signed by at least 39 qualified district voters. A qualified voter is a citizen of the United States, at least 18 years old and a resident of the school district for at least 30 days immediately prior to the election at which he or she seeks to vote. Nominating petitions must be filed with the district clerk no later than 5:00 PM on Monday, April 19th, 2021. So the term of office, it's to elect two members to the Board of Education as follows. Two members for three-year terms commencing July 1st, 2021 and expiring June 30th, 2024. Candidates night, Thursday, May 6th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Uh it is on the paper here is Berea Elementary School. However, I can imagine we will be doing that remotely. Our annual district election and budget vote for 2021 uh will be Tuesday, May 18th, 2021 between the hours of 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM in the Valley Central High School Gymnasium. And uh the 2021 petition must be filed with the district clerk only go there no later than 5:00 PM on Monday, April 19th, uh 2021.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the approval for RFP for CSR. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Sarah, second.
I'll second.
Session. On favor.
Aye.
Close. Extension, 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh next is the adoption of the 2122 student calendar. Can I get a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion.
Sarah, Diane, second. On favor. Close. 6-0. Thank you. Uh next is the approval of driver red instruction agreement. Can I get a motion to approve? Second. Katie, thank you. All in favor. Close. 6-0. Thank you. Uh next, the approval of there between Valley Central and the Westchester Institute for Human Development. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Katie, thank you. All in favor. Close. Mention, 6-0. Thank you. Uh next is the adoption of resolution, reduction of tax assessment and payment of refund due to court order or judgment. Can I get a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion.
Sarah, second. Diane, thank you. All in favor.
Aye.
Close. Mention, thank you. Okay, now, um all right, first reading. Uh next is the first reading of policy 0101, gender neutral single occupancy bathrooms. Um all single occupancy bathroom facilities in the district are designated as gender neutral. Signs designated gender neutral single occupancy bathrooms must be posted on and near the entry door of that bathroom facility. A single occupancy bathroom is as defined in Public Buildings Law 1/4 of the day as a bathroom intended to use by no more than one occupant at any time, both for family or assisted use in which uh and which has a door for entry into and egress from the bathrooms that may be locked by the occupant to ensure privacy. Superintendent of schools are designated directed to post appropriate signage to implement this policy consistent with applicable laws. First reading. Uh just a question. Is that in all schools? Every every moment? Or like any elementary, all about, every every school?
Yes, any any single bathroom, yes, babe.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, so that's first reading on that. Uh next is the nomination. Oh, sorry.
So so I'm very happy to see this. This is something that I've been asking about for several years. Um so the so the signs are actually going to be gender neutral signs or you're posting single, like you're posting gender gender neutral signs, right?
I don't know.
How how are you doing that? Are you posting single occupancy signs?
We're looking through it now.
Because there are gender neutral signs for bathrooms.
Well, I mean, I would assume that would be just be assigned as a single, a boy and a girl. So that they could see that either one could go in. I have the sense that that's what it would look like, but like Brad said, we'll look into it.
So we'll follow whatever code says. All right, I'm sorry. Are there other questions on that? I didn't. All right, I'm going to move on to nomination of both these candidates. Can I get a motion to nominate?
I'll make a motion to nominate both of them.
And Sarah, second. All right, thank you. All in favor.
Aye.
Close. Stand, 6-0. Thank you. Um approval of textbook adoption, high school Spanish, world language department. Can I get a motion to approve? Katie, thank you. Second.
Second.
Sarah, all in favor. Close. Mention, that's 6-0. Thank you. And that is uh the establishment of special meeting, May 19th, 2021 at 5:30 PM. I'm going to get a motion to establish. Katie, Sarah, second. Thank you. All in favor. Close. Mention, thank you. That's 6-0. Okay. Oh, yeah. So just um FYI, as of right now, our next meeting will be in the high school, in the auditorium with public particip- uh participation. So we're going to put out something fast now and um so we'll see if any changes. But as of right now, this is the last time about the public. So um we're making arrangements to be able to do that and and make sure uh if you can socially just and and whatever you want. So just heads up. All right, anything else we need to cover?
I think we covered a lot.
You need to cover some? Yeah, all right. Can I get a motion to adjourn? And Katie, second, all in favor.
Aye.
Close. All right, 6-0. Thank you very much.